I know. It got me straight though. I know.
Sorry.
Just thought you don't like bananas? You know what I mean? Yeah. It has to be like, I've been trying to do one day and it's like this morning. I was like, oh, that one just, I mean, yeah. My, well, thank you.
Good morning. It's 8:00 AM, Saturday, January 28th, 2023. And I would like to welcome everyone in the room and those participating online as I call to order this meeting of the Belbrook Sugar Creek Board of Education for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. We value everyone's input and have made sure to dedicate a portion of this meeting to hear from you. We look forward to your comments during that time as indicated on the agenda. Mr. Lyman, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carpenter.
Here.
This is Dorn.
Here.
Mr. Kinsey.
President.
Mr. Price.
Here.
Mrs. Anderson.
Here.
Okay, we have a board. Will you please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance? A pledge allegiance to the July of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next agenda item is an opportunity for the board to share the correspondence you may proceed. Not hearing anything, we will move on to the open communication period. Thank you. Dr. Cozette, you have the floor.
Yes, so good news recognition. January is school board recognition month, and the previous meeting, we did not have all board members here, so I thought I would push this to this board meeting, because obviously it's still in January. So on behalf of the staff, students, community, sincere thank you for all that you do. School board members are citizen servants who shoulder critical responsibilities and often make difficult choices for our district, all with minimal or about zero pay. So serving has a link between the community and schools. School board members are elected to establish policies and provide the framework for our schools. Job's not easy. There have been and will continue to be difficult decisions. We just want to all say thank you for all that you do in leading our school district. So I do have some certificates here, and then we'll get a picture here. Mr. Kinsey. Where's that gentleman? Anderson. Mr. Price is some over here. Yeah. Mr. Carpenter. Yes, sir. And Mrs. Dorn. Yeah. So we got a picture right over here, and then...
I'm not dressed appropriate. You're close enough.
Black dress.
I'm dressed, that's most important. One, two, three. You get the other one. Thank you.
Where's school board?
I know.
Okay, up next, let's start with the motion. Can I receive a motion to recommend approval of membership to the Ohio School Board Association and appointment of board members to committee positions, which we will discuss during discussion time. Thank you, Mr. Carpenter and Mrs. Dorn. Okay, let's move into discussion. So these are committees that we've had for quite some time. I don't know if you just want to go like one by one down the list here and see who's interested and talk about it. We can start with, I know who had the position last year. I'm happy to continue as the OSBA Legislative Liaison, giving that report a few times a year unless anybody else wants to.
I don't think that's what I must go. I don't think so.
All right. We're not going to lecture for that. Up next is the OSBA Student Achievement Liaison. Last year was Mrs. Anderson.
I'm fine.
The OSBA Capital Conference Delegate. Last year was Mr. Carpenter. I'm willing to continue unless somebody else wants it.
Sorry, I think it's important that someone that knows that they can go every year. Depending on work schedules and whatnot, I don't know like now whether I can go in November. I hope to.
Well, since we retired yesterday.
Congratulations!
I will be available.
No wonder you're all smiling.
The alternate position. Last year was Mrs. Anderson. Okay, certainly we got that role. Great. Representative to the Belbrook Sugar Creek Education Foundation, BSCF, Mrs. Dorn.
I've been doing that, I'm happy to continue. Amendmently, it's probably the most fun one, so if anybody else wants to, you're welcome to throw your hat around.
If you don't mind, if you'd have a good choice.
Now, yeah.
Yeah. But this is an alternate perhaps. I don't want to take it from you.
You're welcome to it. It is one of the ones that is more kind of, I don't know, rewarding.
Yeah, I would think so. I would think so, yeah. How about if we go ahead and we officially make it? Because two people can be on a committee that's not a board, and would we like to add Mr. Carpenter officially? And that way, if somebody can't make it, there's an alternate, so let's do that. Representative to the Financial Advisory Committee. Last year was Mrs. Dorn.
Which is fine, that committee means fairly and frequently, so it's not unusual if somebody else is interested, that's fine, or I'm happy to keep it.
All good. Okay. Representative to the Belbrook Sugar Creek School Safety Committee. Last year was Mr. Price.
You guys such a good job, but it does not a good job.
Happy to continue.
Happy to continue at all. Okay. Representative to the Business Advisory Council. Last year was me. I'm happy to stay in that one, but if somebody wants it, it's pretty cool to see industry leaders as well as educational representatives from around the county come together and talk about stuff. But I'm happy to keep it unless anybody else wants it. Okay. And representative to the new committee, to the Active Shooter Response Team Implementation Committee. We can open up discussion for having the resolution we passed says that you can have one or two representatives from the school board to serve on that committee. For, I think everybody should be interested in it.
Yes.
Or at least being willing to serve in that capacity, so.
I definitely think we should do two.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
And, yeah.
I would really like to frankly be on the committee because it's, you know, aligned with the safety, work I've already been doing, something I give a lot of thought to. So myself promote here, but I really would like to be on that committee. I've already been in police and fire for two, three years now, whatever. I have some type of relationships and knowledge of things while I'm doing, and I'd like to stay with that.
I'm willing to defer my interest to others.
I definitely would like to be on it if that's what the board would wish. Definitely bringing a teacher perspective to the table and making sure that all of our stakeholders and people are represented.
Happy to serve if that's what you all would like. Honestly, I trust each of you. There isn't a single one that I would say, oh, I don't like that person, or I don't, no. I think we all have the best interest and we're gonna, whoever we pick for that is gonna put the extreme amount of thought and diligence into that role.
This is all getting easier. We need to figure out how we want to do it. I'm also happy to serve in that role only if people would like me to, just given personal experience that I've gained over the last 15 or 20 years. Maybe we need to talk about how we're going to decide that. I mean, we could put it up to the board, or we just keep talking?
I kind of feel like if we have two positions, it would be smart to put someone forth who really knows that topic well or understands that, and then someone who doesn't. Because you need the person asking the questions that the community is going to be thinking of, that our staff is going to think. Someone who doesn't just assume that that's taken care of because they know that world. Does that make, does that make sense? Like, I think that combination, obviously, is going to be on the responsibility of both those individuals to get as smart as possible on that topic. But I think like, maybe someone who is, really pro is the wrong word, but like, very comfortable in that world versus, and then someone who is more hesitant in that world to represent the spectrum, I guess, perhaps. Does that make sense?
I'd like to offer a comment. I really agree that we need to have, you know, the most knowledgeable person, needs to be wanted to. And I think Mr. Kinsey is clearly the most knowledgeable in this area. He's done extensive research. He's made contacts, he's aware. He was the, you know, the drafter of the resolution that we passed. It clearly showed extensive research and understanding of the subject matter. I can't imagine that we would not, because if not, whoever is on the committee is going to be calling him every other day, saying, hey, what about this, what about that, whatever. And so I can't, I can't imagine not heavily reliant on him. We're fortunate to have someone who's knowledgeable in the area, both from a legal perspective as well as from what's been happening throughout the state and other school districts, knowledgeable, legal elements of it as well, has cited firmly of the opinion that Mike is still on that committee.
I would concur with your perspective, Mr. Price, and also I think that you would be an excellent candidate for that as well, and also Mrs. Anderson, and Mrs. Dorn too. I wouldn't be comfortable with anybody. One of the things that comes to mind for me is that you and I, Mr. Price, in our last year of elected to the position, would it make sense to have somebody who will be continuing on beyond 2023 in a kind of a guaranteed perspective as compared to you and I who will be up for reelection? Just that perspective, and maybe, maybe that's a moot point, but doesn't really matter, so.
With respect to that, I understand. I also know that we're endeavoring to have this in place by the upcoming school year, true, by September. Although with respect to your concern, I fully get it. We have got to be connected to the community, to our staff, our administration, our teachers. And I guess personally, I see that as an opportunity as we build a smart, other than board member representation. Board members are not the essence of what the Active Shooter Response Team is. We are, or whoever is selected, are representatives to that committee. They are not, you know, sorry, they are not the essence of that committee. There will be a smart building of that committee with representatives, I perceive, from administration, obviously, police and fire, and other individuals that would be recommended by people that would formulate this committee initially. I think we talked was it's going to be two, two board members and then police and fire, and then...
Superintendent.
Not fire.
Not fire, yeah.
Sorry.
Both police chiefs. That was in the resolution.
Yes.
One or two board members, both police chiefs or their delegate.
Yeah.
They want to have someone else. And Dr. Cozette.
Right.
I think it would be wise that once we nominate who the board representatives are, that during the first meeting, that core team, that that team recommends who they think should fill out the rest of the team. Because I want to hear from those fire chiefs, like, hey, we, this is expertise that we're lacking or that would help, and they know that world in order to recommend who else should be brought in.
Right.
And so that's where I think your concern about here for the community can be addressed by, by that, you know. Whoever would, you know, be invited, you know, incorporated in that, whether it's a community member or just a prominence, whether it's somebody on some other governmental function or community function, or just an individual in the community that has expressed interest. I don't know. It'll be for the entire committee to make that decision. And I think, you know, the board members are getting, they're part of the team, they are not, you know, it's, you know, like, so there's opportunity to still get what you're concerned about, I think, regardless of who we put on, on the board.
Yeah. Maybe I missed it, I might, I don't know if it's not really your concern, but that sometimes when you get a room full of super experts together, a room full of surgeons together, and they all start talking, they talk at this level, and what comes out of it doesn't make sense to the people who aren't at that level. So having someone who is not at that level represented to make sure that the output of that committee is like, not that those are, the output of that committee is not going to be a public document or whatever, it's going to be closedhold and whatnot, but it needs to be, I don't know. It needs to be understood by people who will have to action it.
Right. The people that was on the ground.
That might not be that level, have that level of understanding of all the...
Again, I think it doesn't necessarily mean that the person that is not the expert has to be a board member, you know.
Sure. Agreed.
The team, Active Shooter Response Committee, needs to be smartly built with representatives that address absolutely your concern there, you know. Because, yeah, it needs to be knowledgeable, and there needs to be somebody come in with a left field statement, you're like, oh, you know, never thought of that. And you can get that without necessarily getting it from the two police chiefs or from the two board members, whoever they're going to be, it can come from, a crudely chosen other representative, be it administrator, potentially teach, I don't know what the, actually, the team is in.
I agree.
Is in the process of being formulated here, so.
I think the point is well taken. It sounds like the intent is that having somebody there who can check those base premises and make sure that it's well understood.
Including the interest of the board is being discussed here, and that will be recognized by any board member that is designated for this, you know, to make sure it's a well-rounded, you know, team that is on the committee.
And what's the time, like, what is the time commitment on that? How often do you know will they be meeting and things like that?
I would say a little bit more often as we ramp things up and get things going, and then, you know, once things are up and going less periodically, and the resolution's always once a year, I believe, so. But at the beginning, it's going to be a lot harder than that.
For some reason.
As things are getting ramped up, so. But I don't know what the time commitment.
Right.
I don't know. But more so in the beginning.
I've not heard a consensus.
We have not heard your opinion.
My first primary goal is making sure everybody else is heard. Well, we can go around and say two names. If that's something we want to do, or we can further discussion and see if two clear names come forward. And if I don't hear anything in the next 10 seconds, we'll go around and say two names. All right. I don't know. Mr. Lyman, will you please call the roll, knowing, okay, you know what, yeah. So I would like to make, I would like to move that we amend the original motion as it's stated on the agenda with the two names that each representative speaks. So whoever majority rules here, if majority, and if we don't get a majority of the same two names, then we start over.
The top two go in.
Well, if it's, if it's an amended motion, which is what it is, we need to have a majority. So a majority of the five people need to say the same two names. And if we don't, yes. And if we don't, that's fine, then we have more discussion because that amendment fails and we start over, and we do it again. Fair enough? Okay. All right, Mr. Lyman, when you're ready, please call the roll, and each person will answer with two names of who they would like to represent them on the implementation committee.
Mrs. Dorn?
Kinsey and Carpenter.
Okay. Mr. Carpenter?
Kinsey and Price.
Mr. Kinsey?
Kinsey and Price.
Mrs. Anderson?
Kinsey and Anderson.
And Mr. Price.
Myself and Mr. Kinsey. So we have three Kinseys and Price.
Okay, so, so motion passes. Motion passes that the original motion as stated is now amended to include Kinsey and Price. So now we can have discussion on that entire motion as amended. Any further discussion before we take a vote on that? And...
One more for that.
Yeah, I think so. Okay, not hearing any, Mr. Lyman, please call the roll on the motion as amended to include Kinsey and Price, please.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, so that was for the implementation committee. We now need to, we can open up discussion because we haven't passed everybody for all of the committees. Any, any further discussion on all the committee assignments that we discussed? I'd just like to make one comment, and that is that these are not really, except for the Active Shooter, it's not really a committee of the board, it is a, is a committee for the, for the community and district, but not for the board. Excellent point.
None of the committees are committees of the board.
Okay. Implementation is not, no. Okay.
It's committees that board members are on.
Okay, thanks, Laurie. But yeah, this is, this was making representatives to other committees. This is not creating or continuing an official committee of the board that has like specialty. Correct. Yes. Okay. Good point. Okay, Mr. Lyman, please call the roll on adoption of all representatives to these groups.
We're voting, so we've got all, we're gonna, we're voting yea or nay on all of the incumbents with the addition of adding Carpenter to BSCF as a second.
Yes, and excellent point. Let me read through so we all know what the motion is. And this is discussion, so you can let me know if you want any single of these pulled out and voted out individually. I was thinking of voting out of my group. So first of all, membership to the Ohio School Board Association and appointment of myself as the Legislative Liaison. Mrs. Anderson as the OSBA Student Achievement Liaison, Mr. Carpenter to the OSBA Capital Conference as a delegate, Mrs. Anderson as an alternate to that, Mrs. Dorn and Mr. Carpenter representatives to BSCF, Mrs. Dorn representative to Financial Advisory Committee, Mr. Price to the Safety Committee, myself to the Business Advisory Council, and myself and Mr. Price to the Active Shooter Response Team Implementation Committee. Does anybody want to pull one of those out singularly? Okay, Mr. Lyman, please call the roll on adopting all of those.
And Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, up next, Dr. Cozette?
Yep. Central Office Employment Resolution.
Relatedly, because we had at the last board meeting, selection of the vice president, president, and the approval for the budget, God was not here. And just wanted to say though, that I understand that needed to be done, you know, because of the timeline for the January 15 deadline, I think it was, and I was on a work trip, could not be here, we don't have a virtual option any longer. So I appreciate you all waiting forward on that, and just wondering, do I support, you know, the votes and the appointments and the approval of the budget as it was? So again, I regret I couldn't be here sometimes, you know, my real job, you know, that takes a, you know, 40 to 80 hours a week, you know, has to take priority. And so, but again, supporting the decisions that were made, and just wanted to clarify that, I really wanted to be here, and that's good on me, so, thank you.
Well, may I echo also, Mr. Price, I was unable to be here and fully support the election. Mr. Kinsey is president, and Mrs. Dorn is vice president, and I'm quite happy to be in a member seat, frankly, for the platform. I don't think it's ever intended that a person who serves as president served for long periods of time. So I appreciate Mr. Kinsey taking that role, so, thank you.
Recommended approval of employment contract for Dean Diaz as help desk technician effective February 6, 2023 through June 30, 2024. At 203 days, regular schedule plus 17 extended days service, so actually 220 days, step four, class one.
Second?
Mrs. Dorn, Mrs. Anderson? Any discussion?
Yeah, we had a great find. He was previously employed in another school district, so knows schools, he knows a lot of our software that we currently use, so he would be a good addition to our staff.
What's his exact duty? I mean...
Help desk technician, so he's kind of level one of all the help desk tickets that are coming in, and he filters those out to the other people within the department.
For IT?
For IT, yes. Okay, yeah, this is for IT, yep.
Is this a new position or a...
No, I mean, it's, no, it's a replacement, so we had a systems analyst position open, so Mrs. Ruble, who was a help desk technician, moved up to that spot, and so that's why this one's open.
Hearing no further discussion, Mr. Lyman, please call the roll.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
All right, Legal Counsel, recommend approval of the firm of Frost Todd Brown as additional board school district legal counsel.
Is that moved?
Second.
And just to be a little bit more specific here, this firm is going to work with us mostly more specifically on our Active Shooter Response Team and that whole process, so they're, have some vast experience in that area, so it'll be prudent in the board, it'll be prudent to have a firm that specializes that, not specializes in that, but has experience in that area. So that's going to be their main focus for us, not the regular general kind of things.
And for clarification into the public, we still will have Sebastian Wolden with Injustice.
Correct.
As our, as our round of school counsel.
So it's just more specifically for the Active Shooter Response process and so forth.
Isn't there precedent for us using another firm for another specialty as well? I seem to recall.
It's a special ed.
For special ed, so yeah, there's just obviously certain areas that are just more, you know, specific expertise is required, you know, and so, good.
And just for clarification purposes, we are not like bound to any of the lawyers that we, I mean, do we sign a retainer? Do we...
There's no retainer.
So it's just on an ASD basis?
On an ASD, every firm that we have is just on, on an ASD basis, there's no retainer or any commitment to them at all.
Mr. Lyman, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn.
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Okay, moving into our work session portion of the agenda, we're really privileged. Thank you very much. We have a representation from union leadership here. Thank you for taking time on your Saturday morning, we really appreciate it. We'll get a little closer, we hope that we can like get in a circle and make it a little bit more informal and comfortable, I guess the best we can do. Please don't forget coffee, donut snacks, bananas over there.
Feels like you guys are supposed to find a conference or something here.
Weird.
Maybe it might be helpful if you introduce yourselves and your role in the school district, I think would be extremely helpful to the board, just so they can get in with the base and so forth.
Joel Koller, I teach third grade this year, but I've been in second grade and also reading specialist in the district. This is my eighth year in the district, but twentieth in education.
I am Lisa Lichtenberg, I'm an intervention specialist at Stephen Bell. This is my twenty-first or twenty-second year in the district, and I have been a teacher for thirty-three years.
From I teach social studies at the high school, this is my twenty-second year here.
My name's Mark Carrera, I teach social studies at the high school, I serve as the SCA president, and this is my twenty-fourth year here.
Hi, I'm Mary K. Marsh, and I currently teach seventh grade social studies here at Bellbrook Fiddle School. Before that, I worked as a reading specialist at Stephen Bell. And before that, I was a substitute teacher for the district, and both my children went through the district and are graduates of Bellbrook.
Hi, I'm Shelley Smith, I teach fourth grade at Bell Creek Intermediate. This is my twenty-third year at Bellbrook. I am the SCA secretary, and my son graduated from Bellbrook High School last year, and he is a freshman at OU.
I'm Renee Mayne, I teach fourth grade at Bell Creek. This is my second year doing fourth grade, but I did fourth grade special ed twenty-six years before that. I graduated from Bellbrook, so a Bellbrook fan all the way around. And I'm the SCA vice president.
And thank you for being here, and this is your executive committee, your leadership.
Yes, we're missing two, three people, but this is the majority, three people.
So the board thought it'd be helpful to have a conversation with the union, and just want to also let you know, or let everybody know that the SLAST, the Classified Union was also invited to, to be a part of this, but a conflict, a scheduling conflict, she was, they were not able to be here, so that, just clarifying also, that they were also invited to, to be part of the conversation. So again, just maybe start the conversation, and then it can go whatever direction we would like to go here, but mainly centering around better communicating, both sides gathering input, making the best of the relationship that we, that we can have together and for the benefit of the students and the community. So just inputs, thoughts, comments, I think, again, the board wants to make other comments and thoughts, obviously, of so forth, but I think that's the gist of it, is how can we better communicate, how can we better get along, how can we, you know, better strengthen our relationship, I think would be kind of maybe the center of, of the conversation.
Mrs. Marsh, would you like to?
Yeah, I do. Well, yeah, I know in some of our conversations about having this conversation, you know, I, I think we all are starting from the same point. We all have that shared goal of wanting to do what's best for the students in our schools, in our community, in terms of academic excellence and achievement, in terms of safety and general well-being. I think that is something that we are all very sincerely committed to, and that's where we need to start and work from. So I think, you know, it's great to acknowledge that we have that shared common goal to start off with. The other thing too is thinking about the purpose of communication, right? Communication can mean a lot of different things and a lot of different circumstances, from just basic messaging to trying to convince somebody of something. We would like to look at communication as conversations, as the goal of creating understanding, right? So when you have a conversation, you are spending as much time listening and reflecting as you are talking, and that's how you come to those understandings and realizing what other people's perspectives and needs are. And hopefully, it can be a difficult and complicated process, but it can end up helping us achieve that shared goal more effectively if we really are committed to the, the ongoing and sometimes complicated part of having these conversations about lots of different educational issues.
Thank you for those words, I think that's absolutely spot on, I really appreciate that. One of the challenges I have, just me personally, or like everybody else, dude, I love, absolutely we want to grow on that, we need to grow on that, I think everybody absolutely does, since we're only allowed to talk together as a group, like here in this public meeting, is there any ideas that maybe we can work on together about how to make that happen? I'd love to come up with a list of ways that we can better have those conversations. Sometimes I feel, and there's absolutely reasons for it, I support them wholeheartedly, but sometimes as a, as a board of education, we have the handcuffs on us that we can only talk here. So do we with each other? Yes, yeah, so, but love, any ideas that anybody has, because I, I think we want the same thing for sure, and I think we share it very well.
Is there an opportunity to work, like, something like this into, maybe not necessarily every board meeting's agenda, but periodically so that you do have the opportunity? Because like you said, you can't, you, you have to be in the setting in order to talk to teachers, and not necessarily just us, like, it'd be nice to have different groups of teachers that you're able to speak with, but I know your hands are tied in that way, but, like, could you set up other meetings as part of, I don't know, like, it doesn't have to be a work session per se, or once a year, like, are there rules around it? I don't know what the laws are either.
Do whatever we want in the context of a meeting, it's just, how, how effective is the communication going to be? It's really hard to have even effective, like, if we're trying to make a decision, for example, I'll speak for myself, I'm trying to make a decision, and I'm trying to, I'm getting all of these in, we're getting inputs from parents, we're getting inputs all over the place, like, to have the only way we can get input from parents, for you, for people to come here and go on the record with a bunch of maybe really energetically charged people sitting behind you, maybe the parents of your students, like, and, and what helps me, what, it helps some of the staff who stands up and, you know, speaks on behalf of the teachers, but often that is a summary, and it's a, it's numbers, and it's in this percentage thinks this, and this percentage thinks that, but what helps me personally make a decision is hearing the nuance, hearing the why, hearing the, why are you saying that, what makes you feel that way, and then also hearing the, how much there was dissenting opinion, why do they feel that way? I want to hear the why, and that's how I approach when I'm talking to community members, you know, but we don't, it's, it's really hard to make those, I can't get the perspective of, what is that really like for a first grade teacher? Like, we only get fifty-nine percent think yes and whatever.
Well, it all comes down to relationships, like, that's what we do in our classroom every day, like, until you feel safe, until, until you feel, we're talking safety, like, until I feel safe to take risks or put something out there, I feel connected enough that I'm willing to share, I mean, even, I said that, you know, we met a little bit ahead of time, I'm like, this being live streamed gives me a little bit of anxiety, being told, I mean, a true, yeah, you truly can't, but I think until we're able to do that and build that trust with one another, we're never going to get to that common goal. Like, we have, like, yes, it's going to be hard, yes, things have happened in the past we've got to move through, but we can do it, we just have to, we have to build this relationship. So even, if this is bananas, but, like, a team building thing, like, do we go to our groups course and like, do it together and like, get to that point? I mean, some, that's, I'm very out of the box thinker, but I don't know, we have to have like a common shared experience, or we're never, we can keep showing up to these, these meetings, keep showing up to these meetings, and it's going to be formal, it's never going to be, you know, get to know each other as people, or, you know, even just hearing, you know, that Renee went to Bellbrook, like, that's probably new information, like, just even like getting to know each other on a personal level is really important to moving forward in any way, in any relationship.
I guess that goes to the heart of my question, like, that psychological, we can all become best friends, but is it possible to sit here knowing that you're on live stream and there's anyone else that can come in to the conversation, like, is it possible to have that, even if we all have that safety with one another? I can tell you that this, even though I trust all of these people up here a ton, like, where it's always like inviting strangers who you don't even know are listening into your conversation, so it, you never feel.
So can I just reflect back on what you were talking about with the various surveys that we've conducted, and not having the underneath type of, like, what's the rationale? Most of those surveys have always been conducted immediately after a rather, you know, contentious decision has been made. And so I would say that it's probably not that difficult to connect the dots about why teachers would feel certain ways.
Right.
As that's when we're making those surveys. Every survey also, which we have not shared this part with you, we allow for like comments. And, you know, some of those comments, I think it would be difficult to stand up here and express what some of the people say, like, within that, in terms of how they feel. I do think that a lot of it's not just in this district, I think it's educators as a whole. When you were discussing before about how when you get experts in the room, and you have surgeons, and they talk up here, I think teachers, it's the same thing. And we don't necessarily, I mean, we are all experts, and we don't necessarily feel that when we talk about things, that it's easy to communicate how we feel to people that are not listening here perhaps, but are elected representatives, but it's still difficult to kind of convey some of those opinions as far as that goes.
Especially when you have a finite amount of time to do it, and it's not like, yeah, it's.
Right, it's easier if you could, we could all sit down and like, walk me through this, show me what happened in your classes, or get, like, if we could converse, and I could ask questions along the way and be.
But the structure isn't set up well, which is what we're going back to, so how do we?
Love for us to create a new structure, that's still a challenge here, you know, obviously.
And one of the biggest stumbling blocks that I have found since I got on the board was that we are not supposed to talk.
Right, so creates division.
And I understand that there's reasons for that, I do understand that there's reasons for that, but just because that's what we've always done doesn't mean it's the best practice. So, I mean, if we could figure out a way to kind of circumvent that, and not that, you know, so my only opinion gathering, unless you have my kid in your class, like, I mean, then we have a good relationship, we have that shared experience. My, I have to rely on Dr. Cozette to bring that to us, and he does a good job, you know, telling us what you guys think, but hearing it from you guys and just hearing a survey where we don't, you know, it's triggered by an event, like Mr. Carrera said, but there's no actionable steps, like, we want this to be better, so here's some things from the teachers that you guys can do to help us feel better about this situation. It's always just like, we don't like this, this decision, but there's no like, this is what we would prefer, this is what we need from you guys, you know, so if we could get some actionable steps maybe sometimes in those surveys, if those could be shared at some point, that would be very helpful too.
I'm personally genuinely grateful that y'all are here. This is really honestly been a keen interest of mine since I've been on the board, that we have a healthy relationship, you know, with, and the teacher ultimately is what we're talking about here, and it's, it's, there's no reason for it to be otherwise. I mean, it's, it's not productive, and, and so I think it's, it's a pretty interesting observation that Joey said, was that, you know, we don't have a means of talking on a regular basis. Unfortunately, what has precipitated, recently, since I've been on the board, most of the communication we've heard from, from the union is when we've done something that wasn't popular. Now, I'm not blaming on the union, it's the only time we're hearing, I think we're hearing now that we're all recognizing that we should facilitate a methodology by which we can, on a recurring basis, have conversations. So, you know, maybe it becomes a thing every other meeting, every meeting, whatever, just for a couple minutes, the union gives up and gives a, a perspective, you know, reflecting the teachers' positions on things, or just, hey, just some good news for once, you know, rather than something controversial. And so, you know, Mr. Carrera and I talked, you know, and have interest in continuing to have those conversations, because it's, it's not, there is no reason to have an adversarial relationship. It is, it is not healthy for anybody, it's not healthy for the board, not healthy for the teachers, not healthy ultimately, and most importantly for our, for our students. And so, to me, it's just like, we just shouldn't wait for the crisis to have the discussion. And so I think today, this is not a crisis, right? So we, we foresaw this as our annual, where we kind of have like this offsite, which you know, call it that, putting it offsite, we're still in school, but, but, you know, kind of like a, a, a different type of meeting had here, but I really would like to see y'all more often than that, you know? I think we're allowed to have one-on-one conversations, you know, certainly, but when it becomes more than, you know, two board members, and probably a little bit awkward if it's two board members, but at least legally, you know, go up to two, have conversations with, with the board, I'm sorry, with, with the union. But I just want to find ways that we, you know, work together, the world has enough problems, you know, we have really an awesome little community here that is excelling in every sense, you know, within the school system, let's just, let's figure out ways to keep it going that way and stay, stay away from the edges, you know, the cars, conflict and things like that. With, you know, but if you look at it, there's just been an unprecedented number of, of ranking onslaughts to not only this district, but the entire country, you know, anything from, for us, lovely was the, the levy issues, then it was COVID, then a myriad of other things, you know, that had, had been, you know, just really made it a challenge. You know, I think most of you know, I was in the military for a long time, and my wife always just said, see ya, when I have to take off across the world or whatever, and a big hug when I came home. The board has been a little bit different, because this is a volunteer thing, right? And so, so she's like, you know, so this is, it, it's a challenge, you know, doing this, and again, I enjoy doing it because I really, you know, want to see our, I just appreciate our district, and what this district has provided for my children, I have six beautiful children, I went through a beautiful school district, and they came out to better board, you know, so I'm really grateful for that, and just, let's work together, you know.
If I could speak to what you were discussing about, like, we've, since we negotiated that opportunity to have, to be able to speak in front of the board, we have talked about, like, trying to be more positive, but part of it is, is like, and I, I don't mean to talk like that, but part of it is realistically that teachers are tired, like during the year, and so like, there are not a lot of teachers that show up, and so when we get up, it is reactionary many times, which is unfortunate. We've had that intention of getting up and maybe, hey, these are positive things that are going on, but we just, I myself, and I apologize for that, because I do think you're right, we do need to be more positive in terms of what we talk about, instead of only reactionary to things that we disagree.
I'm not blaming you for that, I'm just saying, we don't, we don't currently have a construct, we've not introduced a recurring process by which we hear from you just about, how's it going, versus, hey, this happened, we didn't like it, or even from the board, we were, isn't, we didn't like it, or whatever it is, these could be just, so every other meeting, on every meeting, whatever, just, at least you have an opportunity, maybe every meeting, then you can just review whether there's anything really to talk about, and it could be something positive.
It's so funny, because this is what we do in our rooms every day, this is social emotional learning, right? We have our check-ins with our kids, and if something's off, you don't check in when it's bad, you check in every single day, and you make sure everybody's regulated, so if they are in the red, that's not when you have the conversations, and that's when we've been having the conversations, like, you, you do it when everybody's on an even playing field, everybody's, you know, top brain, for lack of a, it's not your emotion that's taking over, it's your logical brain that's able to process through and everything. And that's what we're doing day in and day out with kids, and regulating and making sure we're coming at decisions from a logical rational space instead of an emotional one.
And having maybe a standard item on our agenda that says, here's an opportunity for you representatives to speak, and not always have to be Mr. Carrera, but each of you, you know, I'm not trying to put it on you. Right, but we don't want to hear only, we want to have the whole members as well.
I agree.
It's hard for me, I get.
I get to work, I don't have to be there till seven thirty-five. I get there at six thirty every morning. I bring home paperwork every night. If I were not here, I would be doing paperwork on behalf of some of your children right now. And then to say, and come in the evening and tell me good things. I'm tired. I'm unrelentingly tired of my job because of the amount it takes. And then to say to come here, I'm giving up my Saturday where I would be on my couch doing paperwork. And then to say, well, spend more time. That's what I want from you. I want a recognition of how much effort and time and money we spend on our job other than the amount of time I spend with children.
And as I, as an educator myself, I see that. I mean, I get, she emailed me on the snow day. She's gonna have to do that.
A meeting would do at seven forty, which is my planning time. Which I, which and I, and that's fine, it has to be done, but I'm unrelentingly tired.
So very much is that I appreciate it as a parent. So thank you for everything that you do. But is it, would it be appropriate for us to have maybe, you know, we've got pieces of liaisons, would it be appropriate for us to maybe pop into an executive meeting occasionally, like once a quarter, once a, what? I don't want to intrude. That's, I think there's a fine line between us being intrusive and us being in your space. But also like just a liaison to say, hey, this is, this is what's going on. The union has these concerns. We bring it back to the board and say, hey, this is what's going on. You know, need that help? Would that hurt? I don't, you know, I'm not sure.
In our previous meeting, we were discussing like restructuring our meetings. And I think that that is something that could definitely be worked into that idea however we restructure it, making it more, I mean, we're looking at, this is a model actually, because we don't have, I mean, we allow people to show up, but we don't necessarily announce it and they don't always show up. But having a more public forum is kind of what we've talked about.
For your union members or for the community?
Uh, for teachers.
Well, I think.
A whole.
A whole community.
Right, no, not the community, but more than just members. So opening it up to.
Yeah, to any teacher.
Any teacher.
Well, and I think, again, building on the structures that we already have, you know, and until we can find ways to expand those structures or come up with new ones. I mean, I think we've already talked more in varied presentations from SEA, right? During the time that we have to talk, we appreciate this opportunity very much. It would be great if over the summer before decisions are in place and we're cleaning our classrooms and gearing up for, you know, a new batch of students, to also be able to have conversations about what we're going to do for the next school year, right? The other thing is there are some other communication systems and places. Our building administrators are very much aware of how teachers are thinking and feeling and what they are doing, and they communicate that to Dr. Cozad. So when Dr. Cozad shares things, believe him, you know? When Mark comes up and talks about how teachers are generally feeling and reacting to things, again, believe him. There, there's been a long process. Mark and Dr. Cozad talk frequently. So, you know, so there, you have people who have been communicating with each other, maybe not with you, and I understand that that's part of your role is to have more of a firsthand experience with that. But believe the communication systems that are in place too. I mean, that could be helpful, I think, in terms of building the trust and building the respect that is part of the conversation and part of the communication process.
I liked your idea and I think it somewhat resonated here with y'all that it isn't necessarily you coming to always to the board meeting. Right? Hey, I don't make all the board meetings, as I said earlier. So it cannot be convenient on a Thursday night at seven o'clock for, for a variety of reasons. So it is a way, maybe it should be somewhat of a structured, regular way that we do provide you an opportunity, not an expectation, but an opportunity. But it doesn't have to be just one way you coming to us. I really like, like your idea. So, you know, you, I know you obviously all talk about stuff that's privy to your, you know, your group, but your organization. But that said, you can always, I think, allocate ten minutes, a board member's gonna stop by, listen, you know, with that. So I, I think all of us, we have, I mean, Heidi, we would welcome that. Love to do that.
And I think it's getting us like, just going and sitting in maybe a PD when you guys are all together anyway, just so we can say, hey, we're here. If you have anything you'd like to talk about, you know, we're here. We're just here to listen and be a part of it. Because I don't want it to be you guys and then we're up here. Like, we all need to be boots on the ground and helping each other and listening to you guys because you guys have the most valuable input to me. But that's just.
Would that be acceptable with a PD day? I'm not just that they're all day long, right?
No.
Go ahead, sit down all day.
But I guess just, yeah, let's make it a two-way street, you know?
And is our board policy that's currently in place, is it serving the best, you know, needs of our district about we can't communicate one-on-one? I mean, I don't know how, how, I know I've talked to teachers one-on-one and I never want to cut out you from the, you know, anything. But, and I know there's proper protocols and things, but there has to be better ways than not to have something so harsh in place where we feel like, they feel like we can't talk to them and we feel like we can't talk to them either, so.
Yeah, but actually, the original intent of that though is that like, we never want to be in a position where an individual teacher is coming to us and complaining about their principal. Like, that's, if we're talking about bigger picture, district-wide things, and yes, like, Dr. Cozad being involved in those conversations too, but if we're just talking about, hey, this is what we're seeing from kids lately.
Right.
Like, that shouldn't be privilege. Like, that helps us color our, the decisions that we make. Like, that's just us hearing, like, what is life in the classroom? Like, how is Bellbrook changing? You're seeing, you know, how are the kids today compared to the kids five years ago or two years ago? Those are the kind of conversations that would really help us. And, and to your point about believing, I, I think there might be a misconception that we don't believe. Because just because we don't act in the way that that druthers came to us, that the teachers want this, that doesn't mean we didn't believe that the teachers went bad. It's that we have a number of different stakeholders pulling us in different directions. And I can totally feel the emotion coming from you and the frustration and the, and believe me when I say that there have been times when, like, I, I, speak for myself, but I think we've all been there. Like, there have been times in this position where I haven't slept days. I lost seven pounds in one week. I don't recommend it. I put it all back on. But like, we believe in the problem is sometimes we believe that, God, I know that this is, teachers are going to hate us, but I know that I feel in my heart that this is the right thing to do and I feel that, like, and I've heard that from these doctors that said this and these doctors that said that. And I don't know how to decide between, like, those decisions that are so controversial and like, that incite so much emotion. I feel like at times, when you're standing up there, it, it, it feels like you think we made them just because that's what we were going to do and we're like political hacks and we do whatever Glenn Beck tells us to do or whatever. And like, I don't know how to make people see that. You might totally disagree with my position, but please believe I thought about it and prayed about it and didn't sleep about it and churned over it so much. But it, it isn't that we're not believing or that we're not taking your perspective into consideration. There are just a lot of perspectives.
And I think that goes back to the communication. Because when that's not communicated, then assumptions aren't there, right?
But you might go stick to communication.
Right, no, I'm not, I'm not saying. What I'm not saying that, I'm just saying in terms of what we're talking about that we want collectively, we want that communication and those relationships there. So we can't say, hey, listen, that is like, we get, you know, you're the ones in the buildings. You're the ones that are around these germs day in and day out. You're the ones that have family members at home that, you know, are vulnerable. Like, I mean, there was a lot of, that's, that was a lot of emotion when you're trying to, you know, and, and people died. Like, people died from germs in that building. So that, there is emotion, you know? So that piece of it, at that time was hard on everybody, regardless of how you felt or what advice you were taking from whoever, whatever. Like, that was just, it impacted all of us on every, and continues to. I mean, let's be honest, we're seeing the effects of that and we'll see the effects of that for a very long time.
And a lot of these issues were very divisive in the nation, I think.
Right, right.
So, and it was hard, I think, for a lot of us because you work in Bellbrook, but different communities right around this handle things so differently. And that becomes part of that too, because someone's working here that we know that everyone's wearing masks or they're going part-time. And then we were here at school, but not to like go back into that as much. One issue that Dr. Cozad and I talked about prior to this meeting, which we discussed, is how can we like move past disagreements such as that? Like, we didn't necessarily agree with the decision, but ultimately it was your decision to make and we have to respect that. And how do we just move past it and to continue our positive relationship in terms of the goals that Mrs. Martin brought up at the beginning? Because ultimately it is about the students, preparing them for life after the school, being good citizens, being ready for the workforce, being ready for college, whatever it may be.
Problem solvers.
So.
Or us.
I agree with that. You know, but in a lot of ways, relationship building is a key component. It's difficult to do to a certain extent. But, you know, I found volunteering was a, was a way that I really got a chance to just try to have a relationship to know that, so that people would know my intentions are good even though you don't disagree, you know, make this agree with you.
We need subs. I heard you were retired.
We're not allowed to be in the way. We're not allowed to go up right into that.
Volunteer sub.
Well, actually, frankly, one of the things that I've, uh, shadowed out a little bit, being, uh, National Custodians Day is October 2nd. Being a support member just go from building to building, you know, take four days, half week and just be there and help empty trash and move chairs.
There you go.
You know, I just, I mean, because that gives, gives us, I mean, we have to think of creative ways to be able to establish.
Connection, yeah, connection.
It's probably both ways, but.
For sure.
Yeah, I think about a year ago, we all had a discussion in one of the rooms during one of these meetings and talked about, okay, I, I think step number one might be, you know, being present and being available and going to all the different events, both school events and community events, the sports and the theater and the band and everything and just be in there. Look, you know, disagree, that's sort of fine. I feel like maybe we've done a little bit of that, so I'm really excited that now maybe, okay, well, I don't know if that's an easy thing or what, but what, what's next? How, how can we grow that? How can we move on to step two and actually start making some of these connections? Rather than just showing up and passing out the PTO things or anything? You know, we, I think, I think we did improve that along with, you know, maybe a certain number of years ago, board meetings were ten minutes long and it was yay, 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 and that was it. And I know, I think everybody spoke into the importance of really talking things out, discussing, debating amongst each other. It isn't fun to have those eight-hour meetings, but we've had a lot of them just because, again, that's kind of the only way we can communicate. So we want to make sure that at least everybody's aware of kind of the thoughts in us. But all that to say, like, if that was kind of step one, I, I think it's time we try harder and we try to figure out, I don't know what it is yet, but we try to figure out what step two and step three is.
And then I think we have done a very, I mean, a bad job. We need to do a better job communicating with the teachers, like after a major decision and saying, hey, and have it there at the beginning of the day and saying, this is from the board, so you can read the intentions. And you know why we maybe made a decision and we need to close that gap a little bit better in communicating if there is something.
But even that's hard. Because for us to say, this has to be a touch on the board, we can sit here and do it. I agree, but we can't go like work on it and then talk about it because then we're.
We're in trouble.
But if it makes a difference in their, their day and their, the way they perceive a topic, then, you know.
Yeah, because if nothing is communicated, then you sit there and you make up your own assumptions.
You make your own assumptions and then the narrative gets.
It's just human nature.
Right. And, you know, and that we learned at the OSBA conference, tell it first, tell it fast, so you can control, like, if we want a message out there, we're responsible for giving that. You know, we have to make sure that, and bringing them in in advance if we can, if it's possible. Bringing, getting, bringing the teacher input too to take also if you know what that is.
I think that's a really good point because oftentimes I find things out as a parent before I find them out as a teacher. And that's really strange.
It is, but we do too. We do it as a parent. And so that's a, like, I'm not as a board member, I don't need to know everything. Like, you know, it comes particular to something.
Yeah.
But, you know, like, we don't know. Maybe you think we know more than we do. Not that we're, not that we're ever being cut in the dark, but like, we hired Dr. Cozad, we hired the building administrators to run the district. And so there might be things that you're mad at us, not that we're going to do it.
I mean, I find a nickel for every time somebody be like, hey, what, what's the progress on the thin? And like, well, did you watch the meeting three weeks ago? Like, well, no, like, we're, we're allowed to talk again in three weeks. So it hasn't been a lot of progress on the thin until we get to the needle, but.
But I think, you know, we shouldn't lose sight and push back and take a look. This district by every measure excels, okay? It sells because of the teachers. But also it, it doesn't excel in spite of the board, you know? The board is not adversarial in everything we do to try to undermine and destroy this educational system here. We wring our hands and we, again, it's no longer five-minute meetings. We've got, you know, hours, off to hours of meetings with, in this case, most of us have kids in the school system, you know? So we, we have a vested interest in it. So, but one of them has to say, listen, stop. There's absolutely room for improvement, not trying to, by any means to diminish that. I will readily acknowledge we have areas we seriously need to work on. At the same time, there's something's tracking, we're doing well, you know, this district. So it's a team effort and it's, it's taken a team effort to get it to that, you know, so.
Right, and Mr. Carr, if we can get some like actionable steps, like I was saying, like, what do you need from us? Like, what, what do you see that relationship being? What do you, what would you like? You know, because we can, we know what we, we would love to just, you know, we, you know, have that relationship, but we want to make, I want to make sure that we're cognizant of what you guys need and what you want. Some actionable steps so we can as a board do, or suggestions.
I think many of the suggestions you brought up here today are actionable. Maybe we can offer you opportunities for you to attend our meetings.
Right, and you've talked about how to make an informal thing. I don't know.
I think dog ball might be appropriate.
We, we had discussed that and the OE does offer opportunities for like grants that would help that, but we have to have specific plans in place. We can't just, hey, we're thinking about this idea.
Right, right.
It's more like, this is what we would like to do.
And I definitely don't want to like a tango weekend meeting.
Right, or, you know, different districts do different things, but, you know, there are.
The end of the year barbecue or the board serves you.
Right. There are districts that do a happy hour, there are districts that do barbecue, there are districts that do a variety of things. You know, I was wondering though, many times you're, you have liaisons to different committees. Have you ever thought about having a liaison to a building or is that not something that would be appropriate? Like, if you had, this person is the liaison to BCI and you are frequently, and people are just kind of used to seeing you. Because part of it, I think, is that like, a lot of teachers probably don't know you. So they see you in the building and they don't even know who you are.
I think, I find out even with the, you know, the staff, I come in and it's like, I'm here to go go to your class or whatever and they're like, who are you? Like, yeah, remember, you know, it's like, here's my badge. Oh, we gotta do a background check on you. Well, no. And so, yeah, it's clear at times they, so that's actually, I think, a wonderful idea. And then you can rotate it over every, you know, for those who are going to the board for years, they could rotate it and each year go to different schools.
they could rotate it and each year go to different schools, so.
Yeah, what do you think about that, Dr. Cozad? Like, is that, is that too like?
We used to do that, right? That didn't happen.
Oh, we didn't use to do it?
I don't know, I don't know how formal it was. It was like, uh, you know, that's probably the organizational meeting, I'm not sure exactly when, but, uh, you know, to say who wants to take Belle Creek and someone would say, well, you know, maybe I have a connection there. I have a child, a grandchild who goes there, I'll take Belle Creek. You know, you adopt the building, so to speak, and you try to get to the events when you can in that building. That's the idea at that time at least. But is that something we could?
I mean, it's definitely something to open look at. I think it would be the, what would be the, the, like, is the purpose to maybe just, you know, the main purpose would be getting to the after-school events at that building a little bit more and trying to get more connection there. Obviously, there's going to be really top-heavy at the high school compared to Stephen Bell's after-school events. A ton more obviously.
But if we're trying to make connections with staff, after-school events are not as important. Any speaker, like, maybe we show up and we cover a lunch duty so you can go to some yachts, you know? Like, those kind of things, it, it, I just don't want to, I don't want to be in your space. I want to respect your space. But also if I'm not there to help or there getting FaceTime, then, you know, the relationship aren't going to help.
Teachers would like that. I don't think they would think it's intrusive because I, I don't know this, but I think a lot of teachers think, well, the board has no idea what our life is like. And then if they see people, board members at the school, they're like, oh, well, they do know because they, I've seen them here.
Well, I mean, just from, we both teach fourth grade together. I'd be happy for any of you to come into my classroom. If you would like to read to the kids, Belle Creek is having family literacy night, March 2nd, from 5 to 7. We need guest readers. I would take anything on you since.
I'd let him do that.
And I leave, but I will say, like, we did the material popcorn thing and I sat in Belle Creek through it. In the, in the teacher's lounge, hoping to talk to people, you know, giving out the popcorn and just hanging out. It was the quietest that teacher's lounge has ever been. I know you all are in there being super silent all during.
Last year.
All during. I very much felt like the fact that I was there and it was like everyone just came in. And out in the hall and talked about their, their business. And I was like, I feel like, I was trying to be nice, but I ruined their lunch.
No.
But I would say that that's part of the process because last year, maybe there were teachers that did not feel as fondly of you just because of your position. So to kind of improve.
One of the only times you did it right.
Or had that relationship. Well, that's, Donnie's been coming in and the kids are like, Mr. Phil? And he's like, pretend I'm not here. And he's like, I want to get to the point where it's just natural, maybe in that face that they don't even respond, right? Like, they are used, they're so used to seeing it. Like, the first couple of times, it's going to be like, you know, whatever.
I think they thought I was there to spy. Then a lot of that stuff was going on in some other districts where board members are like, just crashing the party and trying to catch people doing bad things and.
Right.
But I, I really would like to visit classes. It's never, please understand if I ever be one of your classes, it is sub-zero interest in trying to find anything wrong or okay. I love the school environment. I just love.
It's a good energy.
I love walking through the hallways. I love seeing those kids smiling or diligently working on their math problems or whatever. And so I would like to visit classes just because I, I want to be a high school student again, you know? And I want to learn chemistry. I want to learn, you know, calculus or whatever. I just have always had an intense interest in learning and so I, I love the school environment. And I think by periodically going, you know, at least that also shows the teachers that there's an interest, you know? But I know at the same time, I know there's administrative and supervisory concerns about just kind of wandering the school and just going in and whatever.
There's some safety committee I hear about. It's like a safety committee, making sure that doesn't happen.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful if it's a very specific thing, just to, like, you go in and I know there've been other board members in Mr. Carr's class that debate federal and anti-federal, so you're there for a very specific thing and you're there and then.
Because you never want to just go and hop into a building.
You're there for a specific purpose. You're there reading to kids. You're there for volunteer, for lunch with this.
Yeah, we did Shark Tank last.
Shark Tank, and I think those, those specific things would be much more probably well-received. If you're there for a specific thing and you're not just roaming around peeking into rooms, you know? You're there for a specific thing and then you're, then you're gone.
I'd say with certain teachers, I know them and I'm comfortable with them. I would like to just visit their class if they know I'm not there to like, you know, strip things out or whatever. I'd feel just go to a regular class every now and then and just sit there and not say anything, just, and I'm not going to walk out with those like, eh, whatever. So I wouldn't really want this limit to a special event, although I'm very.
Not necessarily a special event, but you're there for a specific purpose.
Or if you guys know that you have something special going on and you want to show off.
And we could try to do our best to encourage teachers maybe to extend invitations to you for. But you're right, I understand the idea of just being in a class where it's kind of not very formal, but most teachers would probably prefer to have like.
Notice.
They're going to have something they're going to do, like.
Because a lot of them want to observe the students more than as, like, you know, an observation in the way that you all think of as an observation, but like, I want to, I want to see what are the kids in this district like now? What is it? You know, what?
Have you ever thought about setting up the conversations with like a group of high school students or middle school students to get their perspectives too of like, what they, I mean, I think they're stakeholders in this just as much.
A lot of, some districts have like student representative represented to them.
Yeah, exactly. I think that would be something too that.
That's a great idea.
Think about.
That's a, they're moving with that because I guess it's a great opportunity just to complain, right? So they could like do this right, you know, it's like, well, we're going to store up all these things we don't like, we're going to dump it on a school board meeting, whatever. So maybe that, but I'm not adverse at all to interfacing with students and they just demonstrate my interest in that.
I know what you're saying, but like.
Well, like student council, right? If you had a, like, man, that's probably a better example, rather than have them come talk to us about what they don't like here at the school board meetings. If we, and they can do that too, I'm not trying to exclude that, but maybe when they have a student council meeting, you know, every now and then there's a board meeting member that's there, you know, it's a more formalized structure and then they, all the board members come in, then they can talk, you know, and just.
Well, like Mary Kay said at the beginning, there's a lot of purposes for communication, like that communication could just be listening, like, what is life like in a high school building in Belle Creek? What is life like in a middle school? Because, you know, just driving in the car with my kids who are in middle school or in high school, I learn all kinds of things and I'm like, wait a second. What's happening? You know, like, you may not know that or have that insight yet or realize, you know, a kid has in a three-day setting, seven tests. You know, and you're sitting there going, how is that even manageable? Like, how do, you know, like, how do you have to perform at this high level over? So even just being aware of what their life is like and how we can make that system work better as, you know, I don't know.
And I think that there are particular themes that you guys have, like if, again, one of your focuses, what is everyday life really like, right? Or if it's how do you go about lesson planning? Like, any of those things that if you communicate to Dr. Cozad that that's a particular interest that you as a board have, we can certainly figure out how to do that and maybe, again, you take that and you talk to, one board member talks to people at Stephen Bell about their lesson planning process, or mental health issues at Stephen Bell or whatever the issue is, somebody else takes Belle Creek, somebody else takes the middle school, somebody else, or even like a pair takes the high school, because the high school's bigger. So I would think that a pair would probably be necessary for the high school. But, um, but yeah, but so if there's particular issues and you relay those, we can make those things happen, right? We can find ways for you guys to have, again, those firsthand knowledges and conversations with, with people. You know, I don't think teachers are opposed to that at all and I think, again, with administrative support, we can make that happen.
That sounds great. And I mean, anything, any ideas of anything we can do to try to just make your life better? I, I mean, I know in my day job, I wear three, four, or five different hats. I have some sense of being in buildings and talking to folks, but I'm sure I have no idea the 15, 20 hats that every single teacher has to wear. It just seems like every day, like a new form, a new thing to fill out, a new thing to report, a new whatever, whatever, wherever. It's like, you know, educator, counselor, sometimes mom or dad giving medical advice, like, I, I don't know. So this is me prefacing, later on, we have like a thing about school board goals and I totally get it, you guys are probably going to bug out of here, I would too, so. Prefacing this and I don't even have like super any ideas. This is like not even half-baked, it's pre-baked. But any ideas that you have, if there's any way we can like help take a hat off of you so you can focus on educating? Like, I'm so personally interested in that.
Yeah, and I think we need to do a better job like as a board, like appreciating and saying thank you to you more often and just like, you know, I think we need to do a better job of that, but we also need not just words, we need a tangible thing. Because, you know, it's great to see, thanks for working so hard, thanks for giving up for Saturday, thanks for doing all this, but can we like give them a tangible, like take something off, make their job easier, streamline something? Listen to their ideas about streamlining processes that might, might be helpful to them.
Something, I'm just trying to recap here because I've got a list here, I'm trying to. But just so that we're, you know, at the end of the meeting, just whatever, you know, we're getting maybe close to the end of the section or so. But just so I'm hearing things, so what I'm hearing here is some more opportunities, board members going into buildings of maybe get specific kind of things, you know, again, maybe those that can expand over time a little bit, but going in to read the kids, volunteer to lunch or, um, those kind of, of things to, to get to better know what's going on in our buildings.
Math pentathlon every other Tuesday is the highlight of my life.
Those are fun games. But also, um, setting up some times with, with the union of at your executive session meeting or executive board meetings, that, uh, board member and myself can maybe come visit those, those meetings and then maybe, maybe Mark and I or maybe just the executive committee of, of meeting at other times throughout the year. I know we meet periodically, just you and me. But just trying to get those informal conversations, obviously the whole board can't meet at that, you know, with the executive committee, but maybe a couple of board members. And then maybe also some, some questions that, um, maybe you can ask your members on a, on a whatever basis that aren't after an event or something so that we can maybe track, hey, there's, these, these things are, this is getting better or no, this is getting not so, this is getting worse. And so that we can track those kind of things and maybe that could be more information you could share with us on a regular basis, the board on a regular basis, so it's not after an event and it's like, over time, you can kind of see what, what kind of the thoughts are. And maybe it's at other, if it's in the summer, maybe it's at times that where there's not a high, maybe less of a stress level with throughout the year a little bit and maybe working out some of those, um, things. And then also, again, uh, SEA and SLAS have an opportunity to talk at the board meeting. Maybe we could work together to highlight other things that are going on in the district from the teacher perspective and not just maybe a, I don't want to say negative, but a, a, you know, contentious kind of thing. Maybe there's other things that can be shared during that time that are just teacher-centric rather than, or teacher celebration rather than, than make, make some negative opinions or feedback on something. Those are the thoughts that I have.
Those are important too, though, so.
Correct, correct. Is there other, am I, did I keep my hearing things correctly? I'm just trying to see what.
I like, I really like the idea that Mr. Carr had about liaisons with the buildings.
Liaison, yep.
I like that idea too. Because then that staff meeting or something, we can be like, oh, Mrs. Doran's our liaison, you know, like just so then everybody's aware of what she's.
Your point person.
Yeah, or whoever it is.
I know.
Just being familiar with the building, literally, for one year I'm going to be at that building periodically, just dropping by, whatever, not necessarily wandering the halls or whatever, but having communication with the principal. If there's a teacher's meeting, go to that and just, and it's a recognized phase that's recurrently there. And that's how you find, oh, yeah, that wall doesn't need to be painted, you know, or, you know, who knows what.
And if you're the liaison, you can just pop into those classes.
I would really like to press the piece on that. That's a great idea. Everyone thought of it.
Maybe some more opportunities at PD days to, I think that was another thing that was had written down.
More service opportunities for the board to serve the teachers and to form maybe those relationships.
I remember my thing, I think maybe a helpful way to structure maybe some of those comments you bring to us is, talk about other, like, we heard that this other district is doing this and this is why we like it or this is why we don't like it. If you're considering doing that here, like that kind of stuff might be helpful and it's, it's not contentious. It helps both parties, like, hey, we heard the kid ring just decided to start doing this, please don't do that here, like, give us a heads up. Or we heard that they did, that sounds like a really cool idea, where's the chance we could do that here? Because you're right, at a kid, the world is so contentious right now and it feels like a lot of that has come down to like, man, like, school boards.
And that's what I was alluding to earlier when I talked about the school board, even school board job and, or difficulty. It's not just school board, again, teachers have been asked to do unprecedented things and the board has been made, made unprecedented decisions, which has made it a difficult, more difficult job, I think, than it's probably ever been. You know, the state literally is, is not making decisions anymore and they're dumping it on the school board. I mean, it's, it's a ripe recipe for civil distress, you know, and so there's, and that's what I was trying to allude to, the interest in my military service. My wife always supported that, but the stuff of the board sometimes gets pretty challenging because it's not normal, you know, what's been going on for the last three or four years, not only this district, other than maybe the financial side of it, but, um, but nationwide it is addictive, you know? So the boards, the board, everybody, administrator, teacher, staff, students.
But I think that's why when that safety committee was formed, that did feel so like, what? Like, we haven't heard a word about this. We haven't, like, we're the ones that are, you're asking me? I mean, with the secure civilians are, the threat's going to come from the inside, like, to shoot a student? Like, that's where my mind, I'm like, and I wasn't consulted, I wasn't, I mean, no one was brought into the conversation. And then it's like, timeout, like, your biggest stakeholders who are going to be the ones. And, and so that's when I think the, the reaction comes, right? Like, like, it's like, holy, you know, that's a big deal. So, you know, I love the conversation that's happened, but like, we do have to make sure, like, when big decisions like that, that teachers are in that, in those conversations, when it's been a directly effect. I mean, that's who you're asking to do the stuff, like, we should have some feedback on some level.
And I think they're also social, they're standing up. We do that, we get all the feedback and then if we go the different way than what you all wanted?
Agreed, agreed.
Like, we all have to go together.
But it's, it's the fact that, I know as a teacher, it's, it's just the fact that you took that step to ask.
And you may not, like, you made the decision without having maybe a piece that you're like, oh my gosh, I nev-, just like you said, have somebody that like has that different viewpoint to say, you haven't thought about this implication or you haven't thought about that implication or, or consider it from this viewpoint and then you're like, you're right? Like, I mean, I sat in that meeting where, you know, the experts got up and there were a lot of people that talked at that meeting and there were all ki-, I mean, I was sitting there, I was like, that's a good point, that's a good point from all sides of it, right? Trying to figure out what, how do I feel? I was sitting next to a former parent who was a police officer. She got up and spoke about her son who was in my classroom, like, I know, we're all coming from a place that caring about kids. We're all coming about from a place of safety, but when you're in that space, I mean, I sit there in those lockdown drills and tears are rolling out of my eyes. It's just a practice, but like, that's our reality and to know that, like, I think of my kids at the middle school and there was just a threat at the middle school, like, I thought, do I send her money? I mean, it's constantly in our minds, it's constantly a fear we have, both as teachers, both as parents, you guys too. We're all, we're all about safety. We're not saying we don't want guns in the school though, you know? We're just saying, think about the implications that then this is putting on whoever that is, whoever that person is, that you're saying if the threat is a student, I'm going to use this gun to sh-, I mean, that, like, in my mind, I can't wrap myself around. I cannot get that.
Can I interject to a point where we felt heard, just as a side note, just as a.
Sure, sure.
Last year, Dr. Cozad had to bring in the SEA and SLAS to discuss how the funds, the federal funds were going to be spent. And I don't know what the perception was, what we were going to come in with, but we as a group came in and we said, there's a need for a few more teachers at the elementary level. And that is the direction we wound up going. And obviously, you know, Doug, because we could have gone a different direction, but we definitely felt heard because we recognized what was needed. Like, we didn't say we need more teachers, like, for my building. It was at those lower levels because we consider ourselves to be pretty knowledgeable about what we're doing here. And we felt like that was the best way to spend some of that money and that's the direction we went. And it's been effective. I think it's been helpful for some.
Yes, very much, very much.
We were very appreciative to get that last year.
Well, I'll say that, that was a very difficult decision just based on the numbers. But man, was that an easy decision. I don't even think there was any discussion. It was like, oh, man, interesting. That, like, yeah, you know, absolutely, next. So I'm glad we could come together on that.
So good, there were some good, good things to a point.
And maybe we should be better about sharing the notes. I mean, maybe that's what this, you know, comes down to too, where we're having these conversations and then it's like, thank you for hearing us on this, but, yeah, I mean, conversations have to be there in order to have that, that rapport.
And I don't have to say, T, so I think I'll speak personally for myself. We all, we get, we get the, the next, whatever the next big thing is.
Oh, you just jinxed us.
Murder hornet. There's going to be murder hornets upcoming. We bring everybody in, we get all the opinions, talk, go through, and the safety that we need to feel is, if we ultimately have to go a different way, is that what we don't want? The next meeting isn't, you ignored us. We told you what we want and you ignored us. You like, because it has to go, it has to go, that safety has to go both ways. And it has to be kind of like, hey, well, we're just all talking things out and. And it has to be kind of like, hey, well, we're just all talking things out and like, maybe I'm just shooting from the hip and maybe something I said is stupid or something like we're we're churned, we're in the churn, you know, what the military calls making sausage. Like, that it doesn't all become a big thing before it's even a thing. Like, it doesn't all become the rumor mill or it doesn't, we're not mounting the the response or the, it does need to be a collaborative effort and it it won't always go the way that like the teachers or the university wants.
Right, that's what Dr. Cozette and I talked about. That's one of the purposes in terms of what this meeting hopefully is, is this idea that we're not always going to agree, but we still have to hopefully work together realistically for the betterment of the district and the students. And realistically, some of the decisions in the past, and I don't want to rehash all that, but some of them, there wasn't even teacher input. So to like, it is easy to make the decisions and say, well, if we had consulted the teachers, they may have disagreed and so it's better, I guess, maybe just to cut that part out of it, because it ultimately is your decision. But on that same token, I think there had to be, I mean, I think everyone recognized that there was going to be some pushback to some of these decisions, no matter what cheap decision you made. There were going to be people that were going to be unhappy, so.
Well, and part of our commitment to our job is doing things that other people decide we are going to do, right?
We have to do that.
Fun fact, we do that all the time, you know? So, you know, so so just because there may be some sort of personal perspective that's different or, you know, some sort of, you know, unpleasant feelings or whatever, that doesn't mean we are not going to do the thing and do it to our very best ability.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I actually, I'm, the year I taught masks, that was, that was a good year. Like, I was really close to those kids. I mean, we had a good year that year and they were all on masks and it was fine. Like, I I did what I needed to do, right? It worked, right? So we are going to make whatever is happening work for this initiative. That's what we are committed to doing.
Two things. One, I'd like to say that I always want to give you the benefit of doubt, you know, when you make a perspective of what we make a perspective to say, all right, let let me think the best of them and under those circumstances, and I hope that you can do that for us. And the second thing is, Mrs. Smith sent me the information about March 2nd.
Okay.
I'd love to come.
Yeah.
That's really good. Telling stories about the book. Are you here for church setup? Could we just finish this one brief thing? I I think we're probably good, that we could take a recess here in just a minute. Is that okay? Thank you.
Yeah, that's right.
Appreciate it.
Again, really genuinely deeply grateful for you all coming out, especially in such number and with such well thought out perspectives. And let's work together and we appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. And everything you do, I mean, we know this is not your full-time job, you know, this is a lot of extra. My dad was a school board member in the community I grew up in. I know he was getting phone calls at 11 o'clock at night with community members questioning their decisions, so I know that piece of it and I know it will get better.
Where was your dad?
In London.
Beautiful, yeah.
And how would you say being a school board in 2023, 2022 is very different from 2016, 2017 when I started?
A lot's happened.
I never came to meetings where I was like somehow recognized or athletes were recognized. I'd never come to meetings. So you're right, everything changed.
Yeah. But we can change with it and we can continue to grow and that's what we do. We adjust, we back, we.
Every single day.
Every single day.
And I know from me, from my perspective, I appreciate everything that each and every one of you do. And it's, you know, make sure the staff knows that, you know, that we, I am genuinely appreciative of what we do.
You guys have already been teachers in your ability. You can feel confident in that. I've been in two now. You have amazing teachers and dedicated staff. Paris, oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And I can continue to put some of those thoughts together and work with you guys.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Feel free to head out.
Thanks. Thank you.
Well, real quick, I'd like to make a motion to go into like a 10-minute recess. Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Ryan, please call the roll.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Paulus?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes.
Clear recess.
Let me be honest.
I'm going to say, for the container, it's difficult.
Can't see you.
Um, they just have, anyone here?
On this cup, this is.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. You've got two cups today?
There's water and coffee.
Never been a coffee packer. My kids are. My middle school is a coffee packer. I'm like, I don't like it.
I feel like I've passed you coming out of Dunkin's like a million times.
It's because my kids, my kids are like...
It's never been for you?
No, and then my oldest has my friend card in her app, so she always goes through and I'm like, "Did you go to Dunkin's today? You didn't even ask." Like, she's like, "I'm sorry, that's my card." I'm like, "Damn, that wasn't funny."
Thank you to the folks across there.
Okay, I will now call us back to order. Oh, we're good. Stand by. Stand by.
Are we still needed, are we?
No. We're unused. These muffins are real good. When Kevin gets back, our next topic will be Board of Education Goals.
I'm going to go ahead and call in a thirty-minute topic which keeps on passing.
Okay.
You're trying to stay? You don't want to stay here all day?
I always say like, well, I'd like to narrow it down a little bit in thirty minutes just because we used about an hour for the union leadership. Okay, we have a few more things in our work session section, a few more topics. Maybe we can try to keep it to like twenty minutes-ish, unless for some reason we really need to keep going. Next is Board of Education Goals. I'll see where this goes. It's my understanding, I'm not sure how far back, but I, every year, obviously, there are goals given to the superintendent and the treasurer. We think collectively, we're thinking it might be a good idea. I don't think this has happened in the past for the first time. Let's set some actual Board of Education goals for us. So we can now discuss that. Well, I think the obvious one is the communication certainly with the unions that we just had a lengthy discussion about, but that certainly is one where it would be nice if we kind of had some benchmark as to where the perception is on where we are with those, our communication with them, and then kind of for the end of the year, do a check here to see if people feel as if we, you know, we made progress there too. Sometimes things that are subjective are harder to evaluate, but certainly. Sometimes those are the most important things to try to tackle. Right, right. Interesting dichotomy. Also, I mean, communication with our community, reaching out to our community is certainly more, I think financially, we need to be sharing with them information so that, hey, when we get to the point, some point in the future, hopefully lengthy future, that we're, we need to pass the levy that we, you know, we don't get the response, "Well, you never told us anything, you know, what's going on." That's one of the pushbacks we got in 2019 is we hadn't communicated well what our financial needs, so not strictly financially, obviously, but, you know, somehow to improve our communication with the community. Yeah, that's an interesting point, because I think several of us, all of us, have made a concerted effort to, you know, attending Chamber of Commerce meetings, by Bellbrook, for Bellbrook, Optimist Club sometimes. So some of those community types of things, primarily kind of, as I said earlier, is like step number one is just being present, being visible, available to answer questions. Maybe there's a way to go to step two and actually, you know, move beyond just presence.
I think significant progress has been made there, but it's never perfect, right? So we can still do it. I feel like there is a distinction in, well, there are two areas, at least two areas we need to communicate in, just, yeah, with our teachers' union, you know, schools staff, but also with our community. We always didn't think Congress did that. Are we, how are we communicating with the community? I think it really helped that we hired the communications coordinator entering. And so, you know, our, there is just verbose or whatever, a lot of communication that's constantly going out, you know, to the community.
Right. It's a lot of us talking to them. There's not a whole lot of opportunities for us to talk to us. So if we could figure out a way to maybe a community chat, I don't know what happened with those, maybe revisit some of those or a town hall type meeting.
Yeah, I agree, because that's one of the things I brought up in the past, that I continue to be, express frustration at what we read at the beginning of our board meetings. I know I frequently would turn to you and say, "Okay, this is not a public meeting, blah, blah, blah." When's it gonna be one, you know? And so, but what the nature of one, I think we really need to determine.
Right, yeah. So we've talked about this before, though. I thought, I won't say we settled it, but that's when we went to this model, because we did the one, no one came.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And I, I think there's a, I'm very frank, there's a segment of people who aren't there to talk to us. They want to grandstand and be heard by everyone else. That, they want that forum? That's not helpful, really. And I think we're all, so when we did the one, but we were all in separate rooms, so that we were trying to talk to specific segments of our constituency, or our parents, our population. And each room had two people or three people that came representing, you know, out of all the middle school parents, ten people came. And so that's when we decided, like, maybe that isn't, that forum, that isn't appealing to people. Maybe a forum that is maybe just being more, a little bit of everywhere, being where people already are, because people don't want to spend their evening coming to the thing. Let's go to where the people are and try to be more present.
Right. I think we've done a great job of doing that in districts, but I don't feel like there's been a whole lot of outside of the district.
Yeah, even within district, though, I think we're there, but there's nothing that signifies that we're there like that. Where people don't want to just bother us if we're just there to see the show or see the, watch the band concert. Like, we need to have something that makes it a little bit more like
Formal.
Lucy's, like, advice, like, come to our booth or something, something that signifies, hey, there's board members over here that are here to chat if anybody wants to come up and talk, like, because otherwise it just becomes awkward and people don't necessarily know who we are and we're smart and well-named tag that most people don't see. And, and we haven't all been as diligent, like, some of us are more diligent than others about being there. So I, I think trying to definitely have someone at every open house and all the beginning of school year events, but making it somehow known, of our ideas, that we're not just there to see what's going. We're not there to observe the teachers at the open house. We're there to converse with the families who are coming to the open house and let's hear about your thoughts on things. I don't know how to communicate that, how to communicate that we're there to communicate.
Yeah, I know we probably would be careful in overusing tools, but I wonder if every now and then it might be appropriate for maybe, Dr. Cozett, way into a good idea, bad idea for a remind message or a Facebook post. Hey, the school board will be at the thing. Please, please, you know, bring your questions, come up, shake hands, you know, I don't know. Solicit that way a little bit.
Couple of clues here. I'm trying to respond to you.
I'm just more happy to do that, yeah.
Especially at the open house.
Sure.
So, again, I've been at open houses or whatever, and when you're just kind of one person wandering around with a badge and what I can see, and they don't really, even getting the front office staff doesn't know I'm on the board, you know, it becomes awkward, you know? So I think if we're gonna be at these events, I think honestly, we should have a table that has a prominent banner, school board member, whatever, you know, and then when you stand there, people go, oh, you're the school board member, you know? So I think being very obvious, whether it's at a football game or open house or whatever, that at some point we have a presence at a table that has a label that people cannot miss, you know, versus, is that why you're doing? Like, I thought it'd be one day out jogging, I hear a woman, swagger.
I never jogged, you know?
It wasn't. I almost beat the horn, rolled out the window, and I was gonna probably get shot because, you know, some other guy's in the car. But also, you know, there, I think we need to be able to have a way of pointing, when we get faced criticism, you don't communicate with us, we need to be able to have something we can either point to, that we were here, 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 here. But that's where I think if we had like a more formal event, like a town hall, I know there's some concerns with that, what is meeting, legal issues, talking on the fly, things like that. But I think if we had those kind of events, and just listen, maybe we don't even respond. We are here to hear from you or whatever. I don't, but just have a formal event, once or twice a year, town hall, open house. And teachers could also be there with their displays, you know, brochures, or I don't, it could just be a showcase of the district, you know, and opportunity for the board to hear from the community and maybe respond. I know there are concerns with legality and that. I think we could do better in that area, because then we can point to something that was on the schedule twice last year. We had open houses.
And maybe not necessarily use our buildings, maybe use community buildings, you know, maybe a church or some, you know, something that is community that's not the district. Because I know some people that don't have kids in the district don't, they're, they're hesitant, come into a building, it's a cut itself.
Why do people come into our building?
I get it, but maybe just want, you know.
What are your tax dollars are paying for? What are our kids are doing?
So maybe just want, or if there's a community event, maybe we could think about having a presence there, you know? I know we talked about going to churches or visiting, visiting out in our community where people are.
But if we had on like more of like a recurring basis, or at least, you know, even just twice a year, like we do board meetings, it's like, it's a location, you know, I kind of favor Roger's thoughts on that, but regardless, it's just like, okay, well, this is not a normal board meeting, this Thursday. It's a open house. And it is the community meeting that we never, we allude to, that we never do, you know? I do think we need to do that, but again, I'm aware of the legal concerns, especially if we're speaking off the fly, on the fly. Maybe we just, certain areas we just don't go into, you know, because we know that it's problematic, you know, from a legal perspective. So certainly anything involved with discipline with the student or, you know, illegal matters or things like that, but again, beating that horse here, but I've been interested in that, called for that since I've been on the board, and I'd really look like to see us do that. And that being a formal meeting on the schedule, frankly, in the schools, on YouTube, so we have a record that we actually met with the community.
We'd have, we'd have to make it an official meeting for us all to be there. But I think we could schedule something that eliminates some of the problematic to say, this is a board listening night, you know, and say, we're gonna give everybody, you know, anybody who wants to speak until two hours is done or two and a half hours is done. And, you know, your time slide and that kind of stuff, but just say, we're listening only, you know? If there are, if there are things that we need to get back to you about, we'll have designated somebody to get back to you, but we're gonna listen only, we're not gonna, you know, just.
Again, we could also use it as an opportunity to showcase the district too, you know? So somebody that just won an award or whatever, so it could be a hybrid meeting in that sense, you know? So that other people may have interest in coming.
And to talk in there just to respond to a couple of those, so I can definitely work on, you know, if there is a, at open houses, that's probably just the easiest example, just to use as an easy example of making some type of table with a sign and having board members at those things and making it communicated through the principal or through mine that, hey, board member's gonna be there. We can do that. That's easy peasy. That's no problem. The town hall meeting, again, I'm open to that. I think it's, I think it will be a little challenging if it's not a topic, if it's just kind of a common shared thoughts, but board wants to do that, listening only, that's what the board wants to do. We can set something up. I would say if, if the earlier, I don't know, maybe, maybe spring or not in the fall, with the board election in the fall, I would probably try to stay away from that particular timeframe. That's what it was last time, and I think that was a little challenging, so maybe it's a spring. Maybe it ties into some feedback. I don't know if we'd have enough to a lesser or to a later point, strategic plan. That'd be kind of a good place if there was opportunity for feedback about strategic plan, but we aren't at that point yet. But I think that maybe in the future sometime, I'll have some feedback and put on, on that too, would be something people can get their head around a little bit and have something concrete rather than, but whatever the board wants to do with those things, but definitely I can make the sign, you know, pass some type of signage and tables. And if the board wants to be at other things, I'll be more than happy to organize those things. I know there's already, I already have a spreadsheet with those things on there. We could make it even more obvious of these are the ones that board members are going to be at. I can work with whatever that specific thing is, whether it's a concert or whatever else, get a table, get some signage out there, like, make it a little bit more obvious. We'll definitely do that.
Can we look at, you know, rather than one of these days, can we really just look at, really consider a town hall this spring? Because otherwise we go, next spring, we're a year out, fifteen months out. So I'd rather, sooner rather than later, have this communication opportunity. I understand your point about the fall, and I would stay away from that, but I would think of the spring here, April so, and just, just, you know, and again, work with the union. Maybe they want to showcase a couple of their teachers or whatever, some art projects, you know, combine that with what's there, you know, and maybe I think your point's really well taken, that maybe we just listen, we're here to listen. And I think where it gets, there's some areas I think we can easily go back and forth on, you know, whatever, but if it gets into any area of potential.
And we could, we could have some topics, you know, suggested topics, but then also just have a time where we're just, whatever you need, whatever you want to bring to our attention. What about, brother?
We do have a second meeting.
No, you're fine, you're fine. There was just a conversation on Facebook about student participation fees, like, for sports and things like that. That would be a good now thing. It kind of, I mean, it got a lot of interactions.
And in that exact vein, instead of calling it a town hall or like, I think that, like, we don't want to turn it just, it's the annual complaint night. What if it was like idea, like, common voice, like, hey, there's something that's always bothered me about this district and this, and I think it would be better if we did it like this, like, having it, people who have ideas or suggestions, like, so it doesn't have to be a topic, like, it doesn't have to be about athletics or about curriculum, but trying to make it more in the spirit of let's all work together, everybody, there's probably some great ideas out there and ideas are spurred from, or by things that are bothersome, like, hey, I love my district, but this one little thing has always bothered me. I wish we did it like this, and making it more of community, like, school improvement night or whatever, idea night, or I don't know what the right word.
What we do with that? I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
We do have an April, second April meeting, so, you know, that would, we could just make it that, that is the gist of that night, the main part of that night. There might be a little, a couple of things that we have, like we did today, that we'd have to maybe do, especially at that time of the year, but we could dedicate the rest of that night to that. It's already on the agenda. It's already on the calendar. We could just make it more obvious of, hey, we're taking the, the part of the work session or idea or items for discussion is, come with your ideas, whatever, whatever it is the board wants to do. And we could advertise it that way and make it.
Maybe advertising, like, with local churches, preschools, like, to really get the, you know, seniors and the family resource center. Like, just getting, hitting all the areas of the community, libraries.
That's a suggestion for the name, Roger. Again, when we, when we read our board statement, you know, this is not a meeting, a public meeting, blah, blah, blah. So literally you use that verbiage, this will be a Bellbrook High, or by public schools, community, public meeting, whatever. So they understand, oh, this is the thing we always defer at all for formal meetings, you know, it's just, and then this is, oh yeah, finally we're, we're doing what we say we aren't doing.
But is that, is that a legal, like, that version?
But that section of the agenda is just for feedback and information. So the rest of the meeting would, would go on as, the rest of the normal meeting, but then the items for discussion would be the town hall, whatever it is that we want to, whatever we want to focus.
Says here, it's not being considered a public community meeting, so then we, we call this a Bellbrook Schools Public Community Meeting, you know? That's what it is. It's what we aren't doing here, now we're gonna do here in the second part of this meeting or.
The first half is our regular meeting, the second half is a community public meeting.
Well, just like today, you know, we, we went out to norms here for that discussion, for conversations with the union. So the rest of the meeting was as we've normally done, but then this part of the meeting is just, we, the board decided that part of the meeting is different. I can see it'd be the same kind of thing.
I think April will be great timing, because otherwise we'll get into May, we're kind of on regulation.
We do that in Sanskrit.
March, probably, maybe, or February, obviously, too soon, so I think April gives my kind of plan. I would love to see that.
We could just work on the, the language of what to call that and try, you know, not try to get that information out there in time and manner and so forth.
Cool. Kevin's gonna do this here in a minute, I'm sure. So I'm just, I already prefaced it when the educators were here, that, of course, I don't know how to do it. I have no ideas, because how could I? I'm not the person to. But if there's any way to set culture, set policy, like, if there's anything we can do to help take some burden off of the teachers so that they can focus on academics first, I don't know if that's straight, if that's us, like, strengthening partnerships with outside organizations that can help take a burden away. I, I don't, I don't know.
Or pushing back on some of the stuff the state throws on us.
Well, yeah, and obviously, there's a lot of stuff that's just mandated and you gotta do it, and the state's not gonna give us any money for it. Good luck, good figure out. And what are you gonna do? There's nothing you can do. But if there are things, and I don't even know what they are, and maybe not possible, I don't know. But if we could have some type of, as a school board, inertia, energy, focus on these poor teachers that are drowning in all of these things that are pushing that.
Streamlining a process and, you know, like, because sometimes you have to like check the box here, 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 here. Like, can we streamline things so that they're not having to do all that?
And maybe that's just us asking the union or the teachers for ideas in that. I, I don't know. I don't know if it's possible, I don't know if it's not possible. I would think that that's something that the principals.
Right, that's also an educator.
Could be tasked with to say, okay, how, how are you going to be able to reduce some of the, it's mostly administrative burden, that things get, you know, pushed down to teachers that it's not really a teaching task, but it's a, it's a task that, you know, the teachers maybe have some of best information about that, but it wouldn't, but it isn't teaching, you know, so. And none of this is to say that obviously things they're doing, they're doing for a reason and it's important, but yeah, I think streamlining, yeah, that's a great potential goal.
Yeah, a lot of that is, there's a lot of pieces out there. It is mandates from the state.
Sure.
And so, here's a bit of irony is that, I don't know who the legislator is, there's a legislator that wants to look into is a way to get rid of some mandates and get rid of unfunded mandates, you know, reduce those kind of things. So if we give that list to, to, to a person that's kind of, gonna give that into that legislator. At the same time, ironically, there's a bill that's pending that is going to make another mandate on that we have to do this. So they're over here saying, we want to get rid of these mandates, or what are some things we can get rid of? And, oh, we just, we just force some school districts to do eighteen hours of dyslexia professional development, which again, is, is gonna be great PD for, you know, science of reading and dyslexia training and so forth. However, eighteen hours of unfunded mandates that we have to do with no funding for to do that or time, and they were six months to a year late with getting that information out, with getting the actual course out. So they mandated that, and at the same time, what mandates can we get rid of? Well, you keep on passing things that are mandates and, and you try to take some away. So the number of pieces of information we have to give the state, the number of things that we have to do, gifted professional development. If you don't have a gifted license for teaching, you have to give to kids, you have to have fifteen hours of PD a year. OTAS, OTAS, all those, there's all these unfunded mandates, CCP, those are some things that we've done in the past or are doing that we've mentioned in the past, about a hundred grand that the district is spending on College Credit Plus. Great program for kids and families, but it's the school districts that's paying for post-secondary education rather than the state that is paying for that. So those, those kinds of things that, I guess we need to, look at the legislators to try to get some of those mandates out, but they just continue to push bills down.
Does the state pay for part of college, college program?
No.
Really?
No. That's no.
And does it have reduced rate at all, or is it?
It's a reduced rate.
Okay.
It is a reduced rate. However, we're paying about a hundred, I think last year was about a hundred grand. We're paying colleges for our kids to go to college, and I'll just be blunt here. The courses, the AP courses in our schools are a million times better and more rigorous than an English 101 kind of example. Because it's a two, it's a, it's a different kind of class.
Right.
But kids are not taking AP class or our, our school and then are taking English 101, okay, it's a couple hours.
They don't take the test.
Yeah, but AP class is such more rigorous and is more robust and.
And can it get you college credit? I mean, if you tested a certain.
Yeah, I mean, it can, but it's not, it's not.
Guaranteed.
It's not guaranteed, it's not transcripted credit like the College Credit Plus. College Credit Plus, it is college credit. College credit, with AP, the college has to accept that, that credit or, and can maybe say, yeah, you can take, get rid of this class, but you can't get rid of that class, I think, whereas the CCP is. but you can't get rid of that class, whereas the CCP is, it's that specific class.
I remember my daughter said, when she was a freshman, I heard her, she was taking nappy in physiology and saying, you know, this was just a repeat of what I did in high school.
Yeah.
She goes to AP, yeah, of course.
So, again, not to talk badly about College Credit Plus necessarily, that, yeah, it's great for families and kids of getting rid of that debt, however, the state should be paying for that.
We take that.
It's an unfunded mandate, it's an unfunded mandate, until we have to do it, there's no option, so.
But that, that said though, one of our goals as a board could be to formulate our opposition to that, even though it's a shot in the dark and probably is never going to amount to anything, but through the legislative liaison, maybe become aware of that, and support our teachers by trying in these, trying, if you don't try, it's not going to happen, right, so if enough people complain, so maybe one of our goals could be to, you know, the part of the legislative liaison to look at opportunities to reduce unfunded mandates, especially those that infringe upon the time of our educators.
And we can draft and pass resolutions in support of or in opposition to, and I, I know that state legislators see that, and they, they value that.
What's the word we use for that goal, advocate for reduction of, or advocate, I don't know, streamline processes, streamline, work on teacher workloads, reduction. Advocate, I think that's a good word.
Advocate is.
Advocate for.
Advocate for teacher focus on primary work duties, on academics, I, I don't want to say.
I think advocate for reduction of burden of non-educational policies and practices at the state level or at the state level, just something like that.
Non-academic burden. Reduction of.
Yeah, I like that, non-academic burden.
Non-academic burden on teachers, does that make sense?
No.
I like that. So advocate for reduction of non-academic burden.
Yeah, just call it that.
I don't, I don't know if I'd say non-academic, because some of those things are academic, but.
Non-class.
Like the dyslexia, okay, good stuff, but 18 hours is a little extreme, and they're not paying for any of them, they're not paying for us to spend our time on professional development or other pieces of that, it's not funded mandate on, on their part.
The fair school funding plan, kind of that.
Oh.
Yeah, right. So, so what's the word, which is looking at, advocate for reduction of blank burden on teachers.
Burdensome practices and policies.
There we go.
Kind of my thought of this, I reported in one of my legislative liaison meetings like six months ago, and I don't even remember the bill number now, I can look in my notes and look it up, but somebody was proposing that in four years from now, the Ohio Department of Education would have to like reduce its burden by, if it was like 10% or so, it's like, that's a fantastic idea, that's a critical, because legislators, as you say, pass laws to do things, to do things and do things, well, how about as legislative bodies, we take burden away, maybe that should be a focus.
I like, I think what we, kind of, what it sounds to me, good to me, I think this would be appreciated by our teachers to say it this way, one of our goals is to advocate for the reduction of burdensome product policies and practices on teachers.
Teachers slash the district, yeah.
And we could reach out.
But we need to say who we're going to advocate to, like advocate to the legislation?
Well.
Depends on the policy, maybe we could suggest maybe it is advocate.
Yeah, and there could be an effort, and reaching out to other school boards, either individually, or design a proxy on behalf of the board to do that, and, you know, ten school boards in our district like that idea, and all sign on with the same resolution and send it to the board, so.
Because it is a strictly the legislative, it could be others.
Sure.
I, I got it, and I can share a little more about it during the OSBA stuff, but I have a copy of what the OSBA officially lobbies for, which is essentially what the delegate business meeting is all about, is approving or disapproving recommendations for other things that the OSBA can lobby for, and I can get everybody the copy of this, doesn't mean that we should not move ahead with that, because certainly hearing from individual districts as well as the OSBA makes sense for us to lobby for changes in practices and policies.
We ran our hat down.
Okay, so everybody okay, moving on, and obviously, this can be continuing discussion for, you know, many meetings in the future too, so.
So we have communication, we want to have communication with like all stakeholders, and then the advocacy.
We're going to codify it in a written document so that, on our, on our webpage, people can see this is what the board goals are and stuff like that.
Maybe, yeah, I think we can talk more about that and figure out the right way to do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Either way, we're going to, a couple people work together, then we better come together the next fourth meeting maybe with some suggestions on.
Probably need one more goal.
I think we need to have a financial goal.
That's great.
Yep.
Yeah, can you, sorry Kevin, throw it off, let's talk about that for five, let's talk about that for five minutes.
I think that, I really think that we need to start looking at, like, an alternative funding, like not property tax, I really think that we need to start really looking at, Mr. Carpenter's brought it up several times, no one likes that, but, I mean, I think it's a more stable funding for, like, an income, just to start, just start researching, we're fine right now, if we need to reiterate, we're okay right now, but we're being proactive in taking steps to make sure that we continue to be fiscally responsible and.
When I said a financial, I was kind of, I'm a totally different person, okay, like, that, like.
Would be harder, yeah.
Like, that we need to, I think, start shifting our posture to more, maybe this is each of us internally, individually, but shift into more of a financially conservative posture.
Yes, sure.
Because I think we're at the point where everything is getting more expensive in the world, I want to, whether we, down the road, no matter what happens, no matter how fiscally responsible we are, we are, we are going to need more money, whether that turns into some other sort of tax, whatever, but whenever we get there, I want to be able to say, look what we did with the money you gave us last time, look how far we made it go, and look how we had to make some really tough decisions and not do some things we would have really liked to do, because we are trying to stretch our dollar and.
Right, and I think that's.
Go as far as we can.
That's our goal, is being like more fiscally conservative.
If I may nitpick just a little bit, because I'm exactly right where you're at, I think that's kind of what I was thinking for this, but just, I heard you say like, begin being fiscally responsible, like, and I know, that's probably not much enough, because we, we have been, we have definitely made investments and have made decisions that have cost money, but, and thanks to our grant writers and everybody who looks into this stuff, you know, so much of that was SER COVID money, and so, like, you know, the bus purchases, so much of that was covered by this grant, and safety improvements, we got 200,000, you know, whatever, like, while we have certainly made decisions that have spent money, we were very thoughtful in it and did it, I think, the right way, but much of that was not local taxpayer money, we're, we're moving to the end of that, in the SERS, I don't, wherever it is, like, that's kind of gone away or whatever, so obviously, we can continue utilizing grants and things in the future, but I'm wondering, a goal, and again, this is a cultural thing, maybe not something you can exactly write out really well, I don't know, but, of making sure you understand how brand new things, if using local taxpayer money, will be funded, whether that means making a difficult decision of, hey, you want this brand new thing, and maybe we all want it too, where, where do we need to take money away from somewhere else to do that thing, or whatever, you know, rather than just spending money on new things, me, just personally, I don't know if you agree or disagree, that, that would be kind of a good mindset of going forward, viewing the lens of, hey, there's this new thing which would be awesome, oh, that would be awesome, how are we going to pay for it, rather than just saying, yep, and doing the easy thing, and then having to come back and bite us, and, not us, but the district in eight, nine, 12 years.
So I think, really, we should have at least three goals, I think the goal, one goal should be financial responsibility, whatever, and then branches under that, we understand it to be what you just talked about, but also how you, what you talked about, because that really is financially responsible, because we, as we, as we continue to rely upon property taxes thanks to the state, we are really burdening the people in our community that are on fixed incomes, elderly retirees, disabled, whatever, and pretty much anybody, you know, because it's such a heavily expensive proposition when this was funded, so, that'll be my bet, or my, my input here is to put financial, financial word here, continue financial responsibility, and we understand to me that you think this stuff about.
Did any of that, like, is that kind of what you're thinking, do you think you want to add or color to that?
No, that's not, I think for a board goal, I think what I shared, I think maybe the way to capture what you all are thinking is financial, like, start, start socializing with that financial advisory committee perhaps, like.
Administer revenue work.
Rather than, yeah, let's, rather than waiting until we, let's, like, maybe trying to use that body to be more pro, like, proactive, or outside of the box, or whatever, or, because that is, that committee is made up of community members of, of varying backgrounds, right, there are, you know, senior citizens that have children in our district or that used to, there are community leaders, there are members of industry, there are, like, it's a pretty good cross-section of members of our community, but members of our community that are supportive of our schools, but that understand them, they have varying perspectives, I guess is what I'm saying.
So that's the one you're filling with.
The financial advisory committee.
Yeah, I guess everybody never fully appreciated or understood or been informed enough about what it is, and it really kind of sounds like exactly what, it could step up what it's doing, because this is one of our stuff, but we need to rely on them more heavily perhaps for a vision about how we could fund our schools and get community buy-in and what maybe we previously have done, so.
Well, right now, the financial advisory committee is the superintendent's advisory committee.
So it'll overlap.
Well, we just use the superintendent's advisory committee to talk about financial advisory, financial advisory stuff, we should have kind of a conduit for that, it's really.
So who is the financial advisor?
Are you on the financial advisory committee?
I'm, actually, I have to report to them, according to audit, I have, we have to have a financial advisory committee that I present the audit to earlier this year, and I tell them, here's what they found, here's what we're going to do to correct these things, and then we also, it's not a requirement, but we presented a five-year forecast to explain it, and we've used the superintendent's advisory committee as a financial advisor committee, I mean, the financial advisory committee could be superintendent treasurer or board member, I mean, it could be whatever we want, but there's a requirement that there has to be one, ideally, you know, you've got a bunch of business leaders in the community, but we, we did that in the past, and again, it's hard to get people to come to that meeting, you know, you're going to have a meeting at nine o'clock Tuesday morning every other month, and, you know, they're, they got their own business, and they come and sit, and I explain to them what's going on in school or whatever financially, and it's a little dry, and it's hard to make that really exciting, and then, I've seen this several times, you get down to where people aren't attending the meeting, and so we decided that, that was a pretty good actively meet, actively attended group that was the superintendent's advisory committee, let's use that as a financial advisory committee too, to meet the outstanders and, and explain that, we haven't formed anything since then, it's hard to form that too, you know, forming separate financial advisory committee.
I think it's a good one, I mean, honestly, I think, just.
I thought it worked well.
Providing us something more concrete for that committee to do, rather than just to receive it too.
Is that something I could participate in as a guest? I just kind of, I mean, I'll be, wouldn't be the official representative, but I'd certainly be happy to contribute, part of that, particularly to focus on, on what our revenue portfolio is going to look like.
And that, unless we change anything in the meeting, would be, you know, Dr. Cosette has a part of it where it's a superintendent's advisory part of that meeting, and then mine would be that financial part.
And maybe it's not that committee, maybe that's not correct, maybe if that's a board goal, maybe that one board or two board members go and set up some sort of a informal, like, I don't know, brainstorming or like, idea generation, community input forum, talk, let's talk to all the people who have been around for a long time and have seen how this changes, let's talk to new members of, like, people who've just moved here, let's, it doesn't have to be that committee, maybe that, maybe that's a bad idea, I don't know, but.
No one.
Just starting to gauge and brainstorm and discuss, I don't think it needs to be a constant recurring topic at our big meeting.
No.
Until, like, we could just sit here and pontificate around and around, but I think there needs to be, I take that on, it needs to be more focused and more deliberate than what we can do on a Thursday night, right?
It's, the hard, hard thing about financial committee discussion that yields a lot of good information is that typically, you're covering topics like, you know, when is this time for a levy, what kind of levy, and what do you think about this kind of levy, and generally, you know, people go, what additional taxes if, if, keep from, that's a topic, then there's the topic of making the financial information, communicating financial information to the public at times when it's not levy time, it's hard to find too much else, because I mean, if there's something, if the roof is in trouble, we need to repair it, you know, and 70% of our expenditures are salaries and wage benefits, so, I mean, you know, are we going to talk to that committee about that kind of thing, that's kind of a tough, tough conversation to have with a community, it's just difficult to do the actual sit down and, you know, we have a meeting today, what's on the agenda with that group of community people, and we've made it in the past, like I said, going over the five-year forecast, explaining why we need to levy, it's coming up, did you know that the district, here's a pie chart, this is how we spend our money, like what, what's included in the board packet, and some of those things, we do have discussions, but if you have it too often, there's nothing left to discuss, and people aren't attending.
That's a good point, Kevin, I guess what I would say is, literally, I can't, you know, put stall for underscore enough, the seriousness of us needing to start now on a long process of finding an alternative to property tax-based funding, so for like what, what I was saying, it's a task force, we need to really start building, you know, sensing the community, you know, exploring what other communities have done throughout the state, so, the other stuff I get it, yeah, I mean, how many times do you need to hear, that, yeah, we're sending 70% of our money on, on that, we only got 15%, we're using for the roof or whatever, you know, and buses and everything else, so, this is not a trivial thing, it's going to be a multi-year effort, with, I think, parts of this committee can be focused on just that alone, funding, that's what I'm looking for here, revolution, that's not a good word, reinvention or redefinition or whatever, and it's not a one-week meeting, it's going to, something's going to go over a period of time, and, so I think that could be a new focus of this group, because it's years out, but it's going to come back, there is going to be a levy, and we're going to have the same potential contention that we've had, you know, over the last few years, and it's not too early to start.
Because there's a lot of education involved in this mission.
Oh, my God.
Because the initial reaction is that very high percentages would not be for that.
Yes.
But if, if there's a combo, what, we're detailed now, a combo reduction of property taxes.
Yeah, exchanging, exchanging revenue stream, part of K with, right, to B.
And doing it in a way that's not going to be persuasive.
Right.
And maybe part of their focus could be too, is to engage more with the state, but I see almost zero hope in that, because clearly, they didn't get it, with the personal funding plan, it didn't help us, you know, we're still maybe even slightly more dependent on property taxes than we were before, it used to be 27%, you know, the state, now they've got it at 25 or something like that, so, so that doesn't mean we shouldn't try, you know, I talked to Brian Lampkin before about this, he said, yeah, we understand we need to do something, but, you know, is something going to come out of that or not, I don't know, so, that committee could be, really spend a lot of time on this, and maybe some smart, great people. And maybe some smart, great people.
And that will, and going back to Audrey's point, that if we're being fiercely conservative here, that selling point will be a whole, I mean, it goes right with that. We can sell that a whole lot easier if we're saying we are, you know, a budget-conscious
Okay, I can try to put, we can, whoever try to put some word in their mouth and can revisit it. Yeah.
Conservatism in a way that is not political.
Maybe pick a different word.
Yes.
Like, but.
Not responding.
Responsible.
Financially responsible. Aware, like, financially aware.
Next on our list, let's try to spend like 12 minutes, kind of a high-level, just, oh, kind of a high-level discussion just around board policies. At one point, we talked about needing to kind of revisit those, take away, but I think we've made great strides. I know he personally, just really grateful, we made the decision, like, Mrs. Dorn, to this point, has been attending the policy repeat meetings with Neola, Dr. Cozad. I think that's just been immensely helpful, so she can be aware and also, I know, provide really good input in steering some policy decisions. High-level discussion about that, of what, if anything else, could be done, maybe potentially, like regularly taking a chunk. I said one time, it's kind of like a read a Bible in a year plan, where like, it's going to take forever, but, you know, take a chunk and we all individually review whatever, the section 100, and then come with thoughts. And we just spent a little bit of time in the view, talking about that together, other ideas, other thoughts, or nothing at all.
Well, relatedly, I think we've learned that there are not always just one option for those, is that what you're saying? I mean, that there's not always just one option of a policy that was the group, Neola.
Neola provides. We need to maybe look at those. In times past, maybe we've incorporated some language that in retrospect that we wouldn't have really wanted to, if we would really thought through it a little bit more. It's because we're just swallowed with some lawyer group that's given us, you know, so.
Is there a way to designate too? Like, when I go in and read them, I'm not sure personally what is like a federal mandate, what is a state mandate, what is just an actual board policy that we put in there? Is there a way to differentiate that?
But that's, that's the hard, like, in going through that process, I've learned a lot. Because I originally was like, yeah, we should do the whole read a Bible in a year thing. We should do, we should do little chunks, which makes sense. Then, but then I see, as I learn more, I'm like, well, this section, and this section, and this section are all repeats, it's just that we say that the dress code for, or whatever, this policy is the same for staff, as it is for teacher, or like, as the certified staff, same for not certified staff, it's the same for students, and the same for whatever. And so like, we'll make, there's a bunch that are all duplicates throughout, and you wouldn't want to start changing one without having forethoughts and understanding that affects this other one. I'd kind of almost like to, like, we get a sign that, hey, I'm going to take this section, take that section, and read them all, and then come back to the group with any that we find to be problematic, or we have a significant amount of questions about. And highlighting certain ones that, like, we want to learn more, because a lot of them are, every school has this policy, it's, it's, they're just, this is what happens if you're not in the building by the time the bell rings, I'm just making something up, but like, I, I think we're all trying to get at the things that are, either have been contentious in the past, or are primed to be contentious in the future, and wanting to make sure that those policies reflect the views of the people, like, of the currently elected board, right?
If we're going to start on the section, I'd recommend the 0000 one as a, as a starting place, that's the kind of like a foundational one. And then one that relates strictly to board, before we go on to certified staff and non-certified staff and students and so forth. But to start with just one segment.
Right, maybe just have a schedule, like, a year. We're going like this, we're going like this, and this, but that's a good place to start.
Yeah, I think the best. And see how, see how it goes.
Start our own area.
Yeah. Position heal myself.
Right, exactly.
So then, but then at some point, I think, to answer your question somewhat, we do have to bring Neola in at some point to this, because there is, as far as I know, there is no way telling what's a federal mandate, what's state, relying on the person that does this professionally to advise us on that.
Well, what I, I would propose for consideration is appointing one or two board members to maybe sit with, or one more to sit down, or somebody else, and myself and Kevin are sitting. Whatever section the board wants to work on first, bring Neola in, let's see the original, let's see what we actually have, and then go through it that way, and then come back to the board with, these seven are just federal state policies, they are what they are. These three or four, we maybe need to dig a little bit deeper, because if you don't, there's a lot of policies, you're going to spend a lot of time at board meetings.
It's going to be forever.
It's going to be forever, and relying on those, or one or two board members to kind of be the filter of like, hmm, these three or four, we maybe need to take a closer look at, rather than we need to look at 17 of these new policies. Because we also have twice a year a regular update of policies, so this is on top of that. And that's a lot of work already, but that's just, that's just.
So we did two visits a year with Neola, that if we are, and four, anything else would be additional.
Correct.
So we ran this by the Neola, and it's like, we can do it.
Yeah, it's going to be.
If we say this first section, like, hey, by the, by this date, I mean, like, we're going to read policies, this through this, and if you have, like, if anything jumps out at you that you have questions about, or is striking to you in any way, filter those to whoever, whoever, filter those to this person. This person can try to get the, the versions of those from Neola that have all the options. Like, like, this is what ours says, and this is what Neola says that you can select from. If, and we can always go rogue from there if you want, but, like, rather than saying we are going to sit down and go through all the policies with Neola president, we don't want to do that. But doing it chunks at a time, because there's going to be a whole big section, so it's like, yep, that's fine, that's served us well, that's served us well, we've never heard anybody complain, well, that, that seems to be like, big, like, the majority of it is pretty vanilla, right?
But there are literally thousands of policies.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And so if you printed it out, it's a, it's a.
Three full liners.
It's worse than like.
Three five-pointers.
So thousands of pages, probably 3,000 pages, right? So it's a.
Yeah, I mean, each of us are going to like, almost go through it and read the topics and say, you know, I'm like, the start times of schools, or the, like, this and that and the other, like, not going to worry, oh, that jumps out, and yeah, I want to take a different, what do we say about that? And take a different, you know, we've all done that at different periods of time, where we're trying to research a certain topic, but I, I don't know, maybe it was a side down and just started going through it.
What was enlightening to me was the learning that there are like, okay, this is the general federal law, state law, whatever, and then this is Neola's 10 different interpretations of it, which one do you like? You know, I didn't realize that that was.
Well, and maybe it's not that, like, extreme, but it's like, hey, this 90, like, you need a policy like this, this 90% of it needs to say this, but for this last sentence, you can pick the sentence or the sentence. And those two sentences might sound very, like, very similar, it just depends. Some of them are more bold, like, there are more bold or starkly different choices.
Yes.
But that's the exception, most of them are, you have to have a policy like this, and you can't deviate, these are the only two-piece parts that you, where you can deviate, which meets the intent of your district better, or whatever.
Yeah, we're just thinking that we're already doing, you know, this is just a, I won't say silly example, but who's going to evaluate principles? I mean, you want the superintendent, or you want the director, or whatever? I mean, that, that could be, you have to choose which one. So it isn't like there's like.
You have a director, whatever.
Right? So I mean, those, that's, so when there's choice, it isn't like there's like these crazy choices necessarily, it's, what are you doing already? Superintendent's going to do it, okay, and you're smart superintendent. So I mean, there's, but you got to choose who's going to do that specific thing, so it isn't like there's. You thought to that, it's just, that's what we're already doing, and there's nobody else, and that's what we're doing.
Like, but maybe raised someone specifically here, I think with Title IX, there was some wording choices, you know, and that, you know, kind of delved out in some controversial areas, and that we're going to litigation now, you know, and based on policies from our federal government and court responses and things like that, for which we just received a letter, if I remember correctly, from the state, about how we should proceed in some of these areas. So clearly, it isn't always clear-cut, you know, some things just really don't matter, like what you just, that we gave, and some, some do, very much so. And just a couple of words can make a tremendous difference in, on especially controversial issues.
Kind of technical recommendation?
The Title IX thing, I think there are things that at certain points in time, it had to read that, because that became, that was the law at the time, and then that law was being challenged in court, so now it's, you know, now it doesn't have to read that. So there, that's where we're going to want to focus our effort on Title IX, but on those kinds of things. I would say the specific policy, maybe this is not overlap, the specific policy of the controversial issues policy, I think might be a really good place. I, I did get a copy the last time we met, of what all of the choices you can pick. I think ours is fine, it's served us okay, but I think there are some of the things that a previous board didn't choose, like, that we might want to take a look at, and I think it might be a really good first thing to take a look at with the staff members. Because really, that is saying, like, that specific policy talks about what can they say, what can teachers teach, how can they express personal opinion or not? And they're going to have a big stake in that. And honestly, when I look through all of the, the choices that were available, like, I liked a lot of them, like, I think it was, it was a really good framework, like, I don't think we'd ever have to go back and recreate the wheel or start from scratch, but there are probably some things that we haven't selected, or that we, school board of whatever time of the past, didn't select, that the current board might want, and that the current teachers and staff.
True.
Might prefer, because it better protects them, or it makes things more clear and less squishy or gray. So maybe that's, maybe that is two birds with one stone, so I think that's probably a good place to start, that's going to be one of the ones we want to take a deeper look at. But also, that's going to be one that we want to make sure, we need to make sure we hear what staff has to say about that policy.
So I think, I agree, that one is really, I mean, it really is the elephant, is the elephant in the room, right? So we need to, I think, address that one. And then also, I go back to the Title IX thing too, especially in light of the correspondence of the action by the state board and the recent letter we received from, from the state board of education.
I would say that policies are accepted as recommended by the superintendent club. Dr. St. Pierre was in superintendent's role, I mean, essentially, without a question, except for one scenario that I was involved in. It had to do with legal, legal limit of alcohol for class members. And I advocated for zero, like, I mentioned, got it, so.
Should be.
That was kind of, I never see that bit, right?
Yes, that's right.
Well, and not to say that anything was bad about any previous board, but like, the world was different, like, there are things that a, a previous board might have selected, and they couldn't even imagine the kind of things that are before us now.
What might have served the board in 2003, which if you look at the policies, you can see like, when they were last updated or revisited, by 2003, may not be serviceable in 2023.
Yeah, I agree.
So, so whatever meets the road, what do we want to do? I was going to throw out maybe a recommendation, one of all of us on our own individually, look at controversial policies, whether 29, 20, or something, whatever the controversial issues policy is, and I was going to say, I think it's first, I don't know, it's near the beginning, a section for bylaws, because that's, to David's point, that's kind of how the board operates, and I don't know that there's much in there to change, but at least for us all to be aware of them. And we all individually look at the section on bylaws, which is either first or second, and that controversial issues policy, and then we can come back next meeting or email Dr. Cozad with questions you may have, contact Dr. Cozad.
Title line.
Sorry?
Title line.
We need to take a look at that as well, especially in light of the letter that we got, actually by the state board of education and the letter that we received. I think, I think we need to deal with that in the near term versus the longer term.
Good. I mean, why don't we just say, if there are any right off the bat that we know we have questions about, let's give Dr. Cozad that list of numbers, and let's ask Neola for what does their template, including all of the, like, what was optional, what's mandatory, whatever.
We don't need another meeting.
Right, no, just asking them for the, like, hey, can you give us the, your blank template for the, these 10 policies? So we can, we might, we might believe we don't like something, and then we realize we don't, it's not our choice, that was a rule made by state legislature, and it has to say, and so it's no point in us debating it here at a meeting, it's not ours, it's not ours. Does that work then?
I'm fine with getting a list to me of ones that we want to focus on, do we want to, to put those through the normal process with Neola and his parameters going to be coming up? Put that within the whole conversation there, and then that way we can meet with him and look at what the original was, and what the, what the, and get input from board members to me of what they would like of those controversial issues.
We know one, if we can find a way to do that.
March April, I mean, it's coming up here.
And if we can find a way to maybe push the controversial one out to teachers, or well, yeah, let's be really thoughtful about, like, maybe that's the first.
Super thoughtful, yeah.
Like.
Roundtable maybe?
Well, whether it's in a roundtable, or whether that's something that we take when we go to one of their first meetings and say, hey, this is something that we're considering revisiting, the current one is fine, we think some of these other options might, you might prefer more, and we might prefer more, like, maybe that's the first go.
Does that give us something actionable to do before the next meeting?
Before the next meeting, or, sorry, February?
February, what, February?
I'm not clear, what, what are we doing for the next board meeting?
Individual board members on their own are going to look at controversial issues, as well as the section on bylaws, and then anything and everything that's a big Title IX stuff, which I've, there's, it's, it's spread a lot, and there you go, just some keyword searching, as well as anything that, that just piques your interest, or that you run across, you have questions about. And then contacting Dr. Cozad, with saying like, hey, these are something I would like to learn more about, something we've not, not directed them yet, but saying, let's have a discussion, we may want to ask Neola in March, April, whenever it is, to take a look at options for these.
So are those ones?
Sorry?
So I don't think that has to be before the next meeting, because I don't think there's anything that's going to happen at the next meeting regarding that, like.
So are those ones going through the normal Neola process, looking at, they will bring that individual in, and here are the ones we want to take a look at, to then, as a filter, first look, and then that, those, that one or two people, and myself and Kevin, can then provide some input to the board of, here are the suggestions, or here are some possibilities.
I think it would be priming Neola for, when they come, usually they come and they say, hey, these are the ones we think you need to look at.
Right.
As opposed to just like, they'll still do that, because there's going to be things that change that they think we need to look at. But then also, with enough advance notice, where we say, and these are the ones that we want to look at.
Right.
So finding out when that meeting is.
So that's happening.
Providing them the input to say, hey, please come prepared to talk about all of these things.
Or two.
At that meeting.
But then that information, that's before, then anything comes back to the board.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, well, if there's going to be any changes to policy as a result of that from Neola, we need, and obviously the board, because it's two readings, and we have a layer at that, and I just threw out next board meeting, because me, if I don't write a due date down, like, I don't do it, so I, it doesn't have to be, I was just throwing it out there.
Next board meeting, just really fast, as long as I like word.
Yeah. Because it's a lot of reading. We just need to make sure that we get, make sure we get input to. We just need to make sure that we get, make sure we get input to Dr. Kozad prior to have another advance notice.
There's two board meetings in February, is there?
Yes.
No.
No, I just watched.
The next two.
But it doesn't have anything to do with the board meeting.
No, it doesn't have anything to do with the board meeting.
So just like by the end of winter, Wednesday, next Neola meeting?
He has not contacted me, and again, it's March, April, so I was thinking by the end of February.
By the end of February, have that to you.
Yeah, by February, it'd be reasonable, and then, it's probably going to have to be a separate meeting with him, because it's already two, three, four hours long for the normal policy, and that's fine.
And then, but in the meantime, we can get this controversial issues policy before the teachers, slash union, or whatever, for them to start providing feedback, can we just send it to them and say, what do you think, or is there truly a face meeting?
Again, I think that would be a great topic to, for myself and one or two board members to go to the executive committee and get input for that, I agree, something that's concrete.
Otherwise, you're going to need so much input written, it's going to be hard to let them have a conclusion on it. So I think if you have a discussion, that would be really, appreciate on their side, and I think helpful to us.
Next, and again, just kind of high, I'm sorry, do you have someone?
Just all that, so all that stuff is due to me by February, 28, 29.
Moving on, very high level framework type of discussion about strategic plan. Thoughts, wishes, desires?
Yeah, just some, yeah, just some tri questions is, the basic one, we want to do one, so in that, maybe be the most obvious, but a new one, correct? We want to do a new one. Timeframe to implement if we do, do we want, working with an outside consultant to help us put that together, and what's, what's kind of the timeframe of that, I mean, the last one we did was five years, and COVID hit, and everything else, and it just got sidetracked, and five years is a really long time, you think five years ago, that's a long time.
Seems like a hundred years.
All the things that started that are no longer, it's a part of a different era.
So maybe something a little shorter, but just a high level is, we want to do one, what's the timeframe, are we thinking we want to get started now, is that other open outside consultant, because if it is, then I already got some contacts that I could, I could talk with some, some organizations and get some feedback on that, and bring that back to the board at some point in time. So, again, high level, not, hey, we need to look at this specifically, even though, but just, do we want to do one, and any thoughts on how to high level?
I'd kind of like to get your, your feedback, and administration's feedback on things that we would have included in the old strategic plan that are still pressing needs, what do we see from that that is still, you know, top of the, top of the heap on what's, you know, what's best value for us as an organization, what are the greatest needs, as, you know, from, from you, Kevin, and your administrators' perspective. I think I'd be interested in that kind of feedback, also think that having, I don't know, how many did we get last time, nine or 10 different areas is way too many, because you're, you end up spreading too thin and not really getting much really accomplished, especially when other things come barreling in, et cetera. You can get more batting from the bucket out of focusing on two or three, and I'm assured it's not like a two-year timeframe, maybe at the max.
Right, with how fast things change nowadays, I don't think doing a five-year is even realistic or effective.
Businesses are changing away from that as well, a three-year is a long one anymore.
I really like, you know, having something like this, you know, that makes us focus on what, why do we exist, what's our purpose, you know, it's our, it's our grounding stone we go back to, you know, whenever we make decisions, and so, if they literally have something like this, it needs to be expanded upon, you know, with some specifics, but it doesn't need to be a 500-page document, you know, literally, five pages, 10 pages.
What are you going to talk about?
It's in your bag.
Thank you. Because I thought you pulled something out of your bag, or something, and I was like, what is this magical document?
It's too far to wait for.
So, yeah, just, you know, why do we exist, what's our purpose, what, what we reflect back upon, when we reach a why in the road, you know, things like that, so, this to me is fundamental, now, I said, we may need to revise this, you know, I don't know, I think it looks pretty darn good, but that said, we could maybe do some polishing on it, but beyond that, as a minimum, you know, give me a three to five, 10-page document that I, as a parent, you know, could read, and go, this is what this will exist for, this is what they do, you know?
And it's this is the heart of why we do everything again.
And I'm not so sure we need to be sold for that.
I would agree.
I think that a really big, in-depth analysis is necessary when you have a district that's really struggling, you have a lot of these areas that need improvement, I think when you're performing well and at a high level, just, these are the things that we value, we're going to document, what we're going to do to keep going in that way, and I think a strategic plan also does need to look a little bit out, like, look at the things we don't talk about day to day, but hey, when is the next time we're going to have to build a new building, when is, like, there are some things, like, big facility questions in that, that, when do we start, need to start strategizing for some of that? I don't have a great grasp of that myself, like, I know our facilities are nice and well-kept now, but they don't last forever, and, are we growing, are we going to need more space, are, is something crumbling, is something going to outlast its, you know, useful life, and what are those big ticket items, when, when, how far are those down the road, like, looking at some of the more tangible things from that perspective, but I think the fact that, I, I agree with this, needs to be very top level, let's focus on just two or three big focus areas to document how we've been able to do as well as we have.
When you say areas, what do you mean, things like curriculum, maybe? I don't know.
Maybe, I don't know, but, yeah, like, two or three, or maybe one, like, maybe you go as big as, like, culture, and, like, academics, and facilities, I don't know, I'm just throwing some out, but, yeah, I don't think we need to get down into the nitty-gritty, the nitty-gritty piece, I think, you spend a lot of time, you spend all your time planning, and then don't leave any time for executing by the time the plan gets done, it's time to redo it, and you're just constantly, you're planning loop.
All right, so I'm hearing that we do want, we do, we do want to do one.
Yes, we do want to do one.
We still need to talk about timeframe, but, so keeping it more focused, a couple, you know, but, our last one was extremely ambitious, extremely ambitious, that was, happened the year before that I came in, and then we kind of reorganized, and then after the pandemic, well, after COVID kind of settled down a little bit, we then, like, halved it again, and then we, like, halved it again, I mean, if we, and if we still, there's still a lot there, so I would agree that we need to keep it, that, the piece of it short and sweet, of two to three goals, one to two to three goals, something in that range. On the curriculum instruction assessment, that kind of side, again, culture could be a piece of that, we're focusing on, focusing on focus three right now, so we are, we are doing that right now, so that could be a piece. Facilities definitely needs to be a piece, because we have some, I think some, at some point, we need to make some decisions about the building downtown, and/or sports facilities, or other parts of the buildings, again, this middle school is the newest building, and it's 17 years old, and so, you know, things, we need to plan for some of those things also, and then probably finances maybe need to be one, two, we were talking about that as a committee and so forth, but just those kind of things. Consultant, are we thinking, we're thinking no on the consultant?
What are your needs, what are your thoughts on that?
Again, I, some outside help would be helpful, trying to get it organized and so forth, I'm not sure what that might look like.
Like a program manager, so?
That could be a piece of it, but just if someone's at least hold our hands a little bit on trying to get it, trying to get it structured, and then kind of letting us go with it, again, I'm not sure what that looks like, again, depends on how big we want to go, if we want all the stakeholder inputs, and all of that, then that's a pretty robust thing, depending on what, you know, again, what we do with that, so.
Are there entities that do this very thing?
Yeah.
State OSBA conference?
OSBA, yes.
And we really should look at examples of other school districts as well, and bring those in, but, again, I maintain, I'm a fan of something short and sweet, that's actionable, rather than something philosophical that sits on.
I would agree with yourself. Like, there's, like, here, this is, to me, there's, there's too much here, of just, you know, a lot of districts, they go with two or three words.
Yeah.
Here's what we're doing, whatever that is. Innovate, engage, no, the belief statement, the vision statement, that kind of stuff, because again, it does get on the shelf, and, no.
I mean...
Very high level, right?
Yeah, a lot of the, some organizations I've worked in, you walk, some organizations I've worked in, you walk in the building, and right there is their mission statement, or vision statement, and you're reminded of that every day that you walk in.
Well, it's, it's not sore, I mean, it changes from time to time, but it's...
This is why we exist, you know, it's, I think, something to that level, yeah, less worse than that, you know, but less is more often, you know?
Especially for something high level, that's just paving a road, in just a few years into the future, not getting down with the weeds and nitty-gritty, because that's inappropriate for a board like this to do so anyway, just setting some...
So I guess I'm interested in your perspective on outside.
Again, I think it would be helpful trying to get it all organized, and someone that specializes in that, at least trying to get us up and running, and let us, us telling them, here's what we're looking for, and are you able to help us kind of get it structured and up and running, so that we can be successful with it for two or three, you know, if we're doing a two or three-year plan, of just, and I'm open, I'm not saying I'm sold on that, but I'm open to, to talk, I've gotten some, some suggestions from other school districts, and so I do have some, quote, leads, or people I can talk to at least.
What, just something like that call, or, could, is that something you can bring back to the board?
That's something I could...
Or just let us know?
It's, it's, I would say it's probably 10 grand, 15 grand.
Okay, so you're not talking like 100 grand?
No.
No, we're looking at quarterly, or annually, and it's by...
10 or 15 grand, somewhere in that range, again, depends on what...
And not that that's chump change, but it's not.
Our first plan is not to spend that much money.
Right.
But again, a, a, a good plan that is, is actionable, and I think is more short-term or long-term, I think could really benefit us, you know, there's a sense of urgency to it, I think is, is helpful, that when you timeline that out, there's something that's going to be happening next few months, or six months, or nine months, or, you know, you can timeline it out, rather than, this happens in year four, and that's so far away, and that is really hard to, to get your head around, but, but I can come back with some, I can do some homework, and I think there's a short turnaround between now and the next meeting, but I think I can at least make some contacts, and get some, at least get some information from some outside organizations, and see if it's somebody with kind of the parameters that we're talking about, something much shorter, two or three goals, again, probably for two or three goals, there's probably a lot of stuff to that, two or three goals, right, you might be, so it's, like, here's the big thing, but there's a lot of pieces to that, to get that together. But to me, I think it'd be much more helpful than to have 15 things, and people are trying, that's been the challenge with this last plan, is, we were really ambitious with it.
That's why it was, that's why it was a five-year time period, because we got such a big, like, we didn't want to do that every two years, it takes three days, you know, we're talking two. Maybe we can knock this out in a year, you know, because that way, we need, we need to have something to start using it, right, rather than build it, you know, or...
Like, plan, and then start planning again, yeah, like, plan for a period of time, and execute for a period of time, until that plan no longer serves, or everything in the plan is done, and then replan.
And you can do something quickly, and then just have a process by which you recurrently visit it, expand it, want to refine it, you know, so it's not like it's just one and done, or...
Right, definitely building a process, building whatever, and then tweaking, going on, right, going forward, rather than redoing the whole thing, whatever that is.
Good?
Okay.
Good?
Yeah, I'll bring back some stuff in the next board meeting, appreciate that.
Our last work session, little item here, is any OSBA conference feedback that you would like to share, really cool things you heard, learned, for the benefit of the board.
I'll go ahead and kick some of that off, that, some of the things that were interesting, we did have Kenny Anisalo, who was our, one of the keynote speakers, and he is standing on top of a step ladder in front of, you know, 600 people, in the place that says, do not step, and wanted to make, wanting to make a point that, that may have, you know, may have items on a bucket list, and sometimes it feels risky, but you don't typically regret the things that you do, you regret the things that you don't do. He didn't hurt himself, for which we were all grateful, all relieved, but he does, does make a good point, that there are things out there that we want to do, want to be able to do, both personally, professionally, but if we don't really try, you know, we may regret that. But anyway, that was the gist of his 45-minute talk. So there were a few things that, that I wanted to kind of talk through with things that we learned, and that was, I think we would probably want to, in the policies, we'll want to look at, what public participation looks like, because there are some interesting things that have come about in the, in the courts, that may impact some of our public participation policies and procedures, and one thing that, that came to mind really immediately was, we are kind of unusual in our, our policy of saying, three minutes per person, which is, that's part is normal, but 15 minutes per topic is not a norm.
Completely unenforceable.
Yeah, because it's not, it's unenforceable, because I may say, I want to talk about masking, and you say you want to talk about health safety, you know, and, well, it might really be the same topic, but it's, you're right, it's not, it's not really enforceable. Most districts have some, have a total limit that they put on their public participation, and they say, you know, it's three max per person, we hold strictly to three minutes, when, when somebody is finished at, or somebody gets to three minutes, we start saying, thank you, your time is, is up. Frankly, that's a hard thing to do, and I struggle with that, in that role, but they'll also say, 30 minutes is our total time, and so, you know, we have three, three minutes, so we'll, we'll hear from 10 people.
And I, I went to a similar, it's been the same discussion, or, it was probably discussed a number of times at the conference, it was interesting to hear the gentleman talking, because they, they didn't do it first come, first served, because then you can gain, if you're a group of parents who really, I don't know, wants to get this coach fired, you can all make sure you get there really early, and there's 10 of you, and so that's all that we can talk about, so, he talked, like, about how do you pick, like, maybe there's a lot of other people that signed up to talk that night about different topics, so how to not game the system, but how to not show favoritism, like, whether you're pulling names out of a hat, or whether you're using a random generator, or whether you're just saying, okay, well, looks like these three people have totally separate things, we're going to, but he said, people we haven't heard from before, he tends to prioritize, like, hey, we've never heard from this, this individual comes and talks about the same thing every time, like, this individual we've never heard from before, so I'm going to go with him first, there seemed to be that that had standing, I think that's really hard, but that's how they would, I think maybe if something more random would be less contentious, but...
But we're not going to have a problem, I mean, how often do we not even have anybody speak?
No, it's only when there's some really high-profile something.
During COVID, yeah, we had a lot of people, 28 people talk that one night, or whatever, and I think it was appropriate we did so, but I, I agree with you about, I think it's hollow to say we're going to limit any one topic to 15 minutes, I think it's just wasting breath to say that. I agree wholeheartedly with the three-minute guidance, and if you look, just go to YouTube, and you'll see, some of these board meetings have really, really interestingly, they also, it seems like a universal constant here, that there's like a three to five-minute limit at school board meetings, so I think three minutes is sufficient, but otherwise, I don't think we have any issues here, because people just, you know, there aren't that many to come out, and we're done in 15 minutes.
And I'm hesitant to do anything that limits people's ability to come and talk to us, because I think that goes against our need to communicate, but if there is a situation that arises, where it does happen, it's good to have those options, but I, I hate to do anything that's, you know, slightly...
But I hate to do anything that's, you know, slithers their voice. I think a policy in place is, is good though, like three minutes and 30 minutes total. We can deviate from that should we need to. But maybe we can have a bunch of other, like that one meeting, we went on for a long time and maybe that was needed. But we also were supposed to talk about strategic plans like that night and we never got to it. Like, we didn't get to the business of the district because we spent two and a half hours hearing a lot of the same thing over and over again. So maybe things need to, like, I didn't like that. Maybe that needed to be a separate meeting, maybe there needed to be another follow on meeting that didn't have public participation so we can get to the other business that we had at table that night.
Another area that, I mean, we can, I'm not really trying to debate policy, but also a recommendation was within it, you say, we're going to restrict our public communication time to residents, employees and people who have a vested interest in the district. Contractors with your, with your district and so forth. So that was from the Mason City School Board, their attorney.
That was advocated or seen as the best practice or?
No, it was a thing that they, that they found to be helpful in their community. So not necessarily advocating for everybody, but to say, this was something. And they, one of the things that they showed was a scenario in Texas where they showed the same two people who were showing up in multiple different school districts to advocate for whatever their particular platform was, but claiming to be part of the district and all that kind of stuff. So it's, we have a little bit of an easier time.
That particular session, we are from the same session. It was run by the president of Mason's Board is also an attorney. And he was the presenter of the whole session. So he talked about some things that they had done to, recognizing that it's been a contentious time lately, but then these are some things that have served them well.
Can you do that though?
They have. That, I mean, I'm not saying they should, I didn't agree with everything. I did, but it was an interesting perspective.
Yeah.
Right, if we're seeing that we're having trouble, we can make those changes. But I think if anybody makes the effort to come, I mean, all of you have to say. But I do, somebody did bring up a question, is it a legal requirement that we allow, that we have people state their address? Is that, is that something?
It is part of our policy.
It's part of our policy and just people were uncomfortable now that it's live streamed. We don't know who's in the live stream rooms.
I know.
And then people know that they're here and not at home.
And the Public City does the same thing. I think it's a common practice in when you give public comment to identify yourself. But I think what they're trying to get to is, are you, even if we don't preclude somebody from Seattle, Washington for coming to talk at our meeting, we can really maybe take what, you know, you know, bring the soul. If they're not, if we realize they don't have any dog in the fight in our community. So, so I think there's a reason they do that. But I think it's worth exploring because we got, or something like that. But I think it's common practice and I don't think anybody just created that. It's probably something in the laws of the state or something very public common.
I believe it is common practice. I'm personally okay with that also, just because there are so many other ways to communicate with the board. You can email, you can find a phone number easy enough. You can come to a school event and talk to people that having that be policy, which is common practice at a public meeting, I think is probably appropriate.
And then finally, the other thing I'd just to say is, you know, I talked about this before, I can get a copy of what the platform is for OSBA so we can kind of see what they already advocate for. I'll be happy to do that. And open it up to other perspectives on things that people saw at the OSBA conference.
I'll just throw to my one and a half cents on the public participation because I said I don't really do it. I just, just for me personally, I would always like to err on the side of letting people speak. Knowing that there, well, first of all, that's why we get paid the pen to listen to that and that's, that's appropriate. You should be able to, you know, petition your elected representatives at any time for a believer in that. Knowing that if things ever do absolutely get out of control and, you know, torches start being thrown, there are truths in our disposal based on policy and whatnot then. But, you know, and I think that that shows the culture that we've built the last year and a half is that there have been some eight hour, high energy meetings. And, you know, the chairman made the decision, I think it was the right one at the time, that, hey, we're going to waive the 15 minute limit, we're going to waive the 30 minute limit. I personally think that that's good, just me.
But do we think it's wise to move, knowing that the three or 15 minutes per topic is a useless thing, in my opinion, like because you cannot regulate it? But having some alternative, that would waive whatever you want, but having some other alternative, I think might be a good idea. Or also drop that completely because it's not.
I would agree.
It's too easily circumvented. You don't know what you are going to say until they say it. It's like.
Would you mind not to put it out? If you make a note to Taco Niola or whatever that is, a policy that we have to change and yet either it's just striking that 15 minute topic limit or coming up with an alternative to bring back to the board? But, but three minutes, I think is appropriate. I'm just trying to, and also like, so that people know, that's not to cut anybody off, it's not to make anybody shut up. That's truly, the goal of that is so that each speaker can be treated fairly and equally. That it might be seen as unequal if one speaker is allowed to go on for 15 minutes just because that's what they prepare and another speaker on the opposite side of the same issue only goes two minutes because that's what they prepare. That, that's, that's an equality goal is why that three minute exists.
Anything?
Anything else have anything that they want to share?
No, the OSBA conference was really good. Student achievement there was outstanding, seeing what all the kids were doing. Mrs. Rivera took the support peers group and made, there was tons of positive feedback on that. I did go to the John Lithgow talk and it was really good about arts and education and making sure that that's valued, so little fangirling. It was really nice, I sent it in and, you know, they honored actually my neighbor across the street. They gave me a house.
I really regret it, I don't have fully appreciated what it is. And secondly, I had intense travel starting in September, I mean, overseas twice and all the way across the country multiple times. And so it's just, I really would have been forward to next year. I did, I would reflect upon when we had the deep discussion last meeting I was at, about how many SROs to have, you know? And so, as I understand, you had some conversations with folks there and they talked about other ways they've leveraged coverage, you know? So one of the conversations I want to have with our, you know, since obviously I know it was a paper four, for now, we're just doing two, but there may be some community ways of addressing that, you know? So I took note of the statements you made and that one day, SRT, I will bring that up, you know, with our local law enforcement on ways to address, you know? Not necessarily having always constant presence at each school.
I took a few notes in that session that I'll share with you. I think I shared most of them, but yeah, ways to just informally increase police presence and just parking cars, whatever, being used at the time or having just officers pop through each building as part of their shift or whatnot. Different schools are doing different things. Along the same vein as, since we've been really focusing on safety and security for the last year, I passed this information along to GNS, segment authority, as well as the transportation department. But I met with representatives from a company that do specifically a professional development for bus drivers and transportation regarding not just, not just active shooter scares, but recognizing that those are one of the softest targets and those individuals who are driving a bus are on their own. And so this company does a full day of PD, including driving the bus and simulating. They get out from the yard with the bus drivers to talk about de-escalation techniques, how to recognize something before it starts, what to do when it does start, how to maneuver your bus if something is going down of a violent nature at the back and how to, like, how to, how to do all of that safely. I was very impressed with what, what these guys were, were showing. And they're out of, somewhere up in northern Ohio, so I don't think they have engaged any districts as far south as we are. But I passed their name along, I'll pass it on to you because it might be something to bring up. But, I mean, it's kind of in that safety, it's safety, but it's also security. But they expressed that a lot of bus drivers are really appreciative because they end up going to all the regular PD that doesn't, a lot of it doesn't really apply to them so much. They sit through it or else they're excluded from it. And this was a PD that was specific to them. And these guys are a mix of law enforcement and specialists in that area, but also transportation folks who know how to drive buses and how difficult that is and those kinds of scenarios. So, but anyway, the company escapes me right now, but I did pass along my info that GNS.
Might be the same company we had somewhere PD two years ago with Waynesville. We shared the cost with Waynesville, some folks came in and it's recognizing here on the bus route, things that look out of normal, how to respond to those things. And those that looks very, sounds very similar. I'm not sure if that's the same group or not, but I know it costs something because we shared the cost with Waynesville. We kind of moved over, we came over here, we did a presentation and it was two, three, four hours.
They do a full day, this company, this particular company does a full day. They didn't give me an exact price because they said it kind of depends, but they said generally in the magnitude of 10 to 15 grand was what. I was like, are we talking about that? Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm actually talking. But that they take your whole, and they said for a district our size, they could do it and one day a big Lakota or something, they have to break their department into multiple days and they might be there a whole week, but a district our size, they would do it. But it would be a full day, partially classroom, partially like actually simulated. They go out and they simulate these events happening in our buses and make the drivers go through the process of getting the bus pulled over safely and like. It's not as related and engaging. And since we focused on all of that so much and we haven't really put much focus on to how safe our buses are, that's probably one of the bigger standouts from my conference for me.
For those of you that were there, was there any discussion about, or I guess that was the position on this proposal that was brought up right at the end of the year about renewing, or sorry, revising the higher part of education to the higher part of education and workforce? It's, it's a, I don't know about this thing, it seems pretty radical. Basically, change the way that how the state board of education is working. Basically, it will become a government, sorry, a government function of our, a lot of the responsibilities will become a government, government function versus a, you know, a board. And frankly, I have significant concerns about that. Nothing you were smart on that, or was discussed there?
I don't think it was on the radar at that point.
I don't think there's anything formal, it was mentioned a couple of times. There wasn't anything formal that I saw in any breakout sessions. There have been emails today, but at the conference, just me personally, my personal eyes, I much prefer having local representation of elected representatives on a board rather than some type of a czar at the.
Yeah, it really concerns me. The House Bill 178, it was linked with a couple of other bills and they all went down flames right there at the end because I think they tried to link too much together. This kind of came out of nowhere, I think, like in September. And next thing you know, we're talking about essentially divesting the higher part of education as we know it, essentially putting those responsibilities on the office of the governor. And maybe people are happy with the current governor we have, but you know, next, next round, maybe we're making people in general harm in the educational realm. And now all of a sudden, you're kind of stuck with, you know, a czar, like you said. So I don't know, I don't know if we as a board need to get a little bit smarter on it. Maybe make some, if we, you know, maybe we'll support it, we go investigate a little bit. But I think it's not insignificant. I think we need to take a look at this and eventually come up with a board position and convey that to the state.
Yeah, just to provide some more information on there, they tried to, the legislature tried to get it to lame duck in December there, but all the organizations, BASSA, OASPO and OSBA, I say all the organizations, those three were against it. At the surface level, you're trying to ramp this down, but you need to have more conversation, more input, more, more talk about this. So it didn't get voted in. However, it's Senate Bill One, it's already there. The Senate had, it's Senate Bill One to essentially bring it down to whatever's in the Constitution about the state board, those are the things that the state board can do, what's in the Constitution. Everything else then would be pushed to, they call it DEW, Department of Education and Workforce, is the DEW. I thought you said the do, no, not do, but the do. Department of Education and Workforce. It has a lot of momentum in, in the Senate, obviously, and I think it's a, Republicans are behind it, obviously, that Senate government is, well, I mean, enough to, enough to get it there, to, to get it as Senate Bill One. I, I, I think it's going to be hard pressed not to pass, but I think we're a long way away from that. Obviously, it's still in the Senate, it's still in hearings. It just puts a lot of power into the State House there.
It really concerns me. I just, again, it could, it could be awesome if you got the right governor, you know? I'm not saying whether correctly it is or is not, but just, you know? But if, if how education is conducted in the state is largely driven by the personality of the governor at the moment, I think that's reckless. And, you know, I, I personally often reflect upon how the state deals with our education system. And I, I, at times I feel honestly that they're adversarial towards public education and.
Support that perspective?
What's that?
I would support that perspective.
Yeah.
Because here's what happens, the legislators, they make the laws and then they say, ODE, Department of Education, you, well, what you gave us in timelines is not reasonable. And so that's where I think the friction and the, the, some of the pushback against ODE is. The legislatures make these rules, laws, whatever mandates, and then ODE is understaffed and or not reasonable timelines to do things. For example, the dyslexia training, the timelines they put into that were not reasonable and that's why it came out late and it's a little bit more complicated than they thought. When pushed and shoved, the devil's in the details of how that's all done. And then, so.
It's not different than other agency, government agencies. The federal government does that to us all the time too. I think it's a really complex issue because the powers that the state board of education really had were, really had no power. And they were made up of this weird mix of appointed people and elected people.
Yeah.
Weirdness, like they even discussed it, they were just more like advocates or consultants or whatever, like they didn't really have any power over anything either. So if that goes away, if just that is being given to some other body, then I don't, I don't, it's hard to say, like, if all of a sudden that is going to become power, which is, which was not previously actual power, if that makes sense.
At least, you know, at the board level where you have some mixture, I think mostly appointed, is that right, and some elected, like nine appointed and eight elected or something like that?
Yeah.
And so at least you have a body that's dedicated to discussion, to debate, to be informed versus, you know, what ultimately could just be two or three people advising the governor who's making a decree, you know? And maybe I'm oversimplifying what's going on there, maybe not even speaking knowledgefully about it. But I think that roughly what we're talking about.
Right.
And I think that's, I mean, to me, I think all the board members should be elected, you know? And then be able, the state have their voice. But it seems like already the governor had significant influence on how the board could conduct itself. And now it looks like he's wanting to essentially swallow all of it. And I'm just, I'm not a fan of that, as I understand it. But I'm open minded, I'll listen, I need to read more, learn more. But first reaction is this is bad, really bad.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with you. I just, I have always failed to fully understand the role of the state board of education. Like what comes out of them is things like letters urging us to do something.
Right.
Good. Are we, any more discussion about OSBA? Because if not, I would like to make a motion such that the board will meet an executive session for the purpose of considering the employment and compensation of a public employee per RC 121 dot 22G1.
Second.
Second, and this is Doran, thank you. Quick point of discussion, I try to remember this, I usually fail. A couple of things just for folks who aren't familiar with executive session for your own application. Number one, we are. Number one, we are not allowed to make any decision or vote in executive session. We never do that. And second, we are not allowed and we never talk about any item that is not specifically what I just read. Mr. Lemon, please call the board to go into the executive session.
Mrs. Doran?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
All right, question passes, we are in the executive session as of 11:30 AM.
We're unmuted and then one fifteen.
All right, we are on executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr. And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Oh, can I call the board? Mr. Preiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later. Have a good one. Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey's a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 1:29 PM. There you go. See you all later.
Yeah.
Have a good one. Thank you. That was our executive session at 1:29 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Dorr.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Can I call the rule?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Price?
Yes.